Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start the meeting this evening. Uh, we're going to start with a swearing-in ceremony of recently-elected city council members for District 1, District 3, and District 5. In District 1, we have a reelection of Councilwoman Amy Caramba. In District 3, we have an election of Laura Carr, who now officially loses her title of Councilwoman-elect. She will become Councilwoman this evening. And the reelection of Councilman Mike Gibson. And we're gonna perform this ceremony this evening. The Honorable Judge Romero Manalec? I've been practicing that. So, welcome. And Judge, if you could please come forward for the swearing-in ceremony. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Simmons, members of the council, citizens, and guests. I am Circuit Judge Romero Manalech. I currently preside in the Criminal Division in Lee County Circuit Court. I wanna welcome all of you here, and I wanna just begin by saying that it's truly a privilege and an honor for me as a member of the judiciary to perform this important function for the members of the legislative branch. I actually feel as if I'm among friends and neighbors, and the reason I say that is, number one, I'm a resident of Benita Springs. Secondly, Audrey Vance, your city attorney, is someone that has been a colleague of mine prior to becoming a judge when I was the Chief Assistant County Attorney down in Collier County. I've known her, and she's been distinguished in local government law for many years. And then I was happy to learn from Councilman-elect, or reelect, I should say, Gibson, that he actually served on one of my juries within the last year and a half in a case I had. So, it's a small world, and it's great to be here. We do have Councilman Caramba, congratulations. Councilwoman Carr, and Councilwoman Gibson, congratulations to all of you. You have been chosen and entrusted by the voters of this city to lead this city. And I just want to say one thing from one of the great thinkers of Western civilization and one of the framers of our Constitution, Thomas Jefferson, to inspire you before I swear you in. And Jefferson once remarked that "The excellence of every government is its adaptation to the circumstances and needs of those that are to be the governed." And that is the mission for you, and I wish you the best. With no further ado, I begin with Councilman Caramba. If you could please step forward, and we'll swear you in at this time. If you have anyone that is significant that you'd like to join us?
My husband.
Very good, very good.
He's still significant.
Yes, indeed. Good evening, sir. Pleasure to meet you.
It's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you. And let me just ask, do you want me on this side?
Yes, it's my turn.
All right. Is this adequate? All right. All right. If you will place your right hand on the Bible and repeat after me at this time. I state your name.
I, Amelia Caramba.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Benita Springs.
Of the city of Benita Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Council.
Of the office of City Council.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
(applause)
We charge by the minute, Jim.
Next, Councilwoman Carr, and anyone you would like to invite up?
My husband and dear friends, Jeff and Ann?
No?
They don't wanna come in.
Good evening.
Hi.
If you would please be prepared to swear at this time, and I'll have you take the microphone. I state your name.
I, Laura Carr.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I will.
And I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe all the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Benita Springs.
Of the city of Benita Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Council.
Of the office of City Council.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And last but not least, Councilman Gibson. Would you like to invite anyone up, sir? And Councilman, who are these folks?
My parents.
All right, nice to meet you folks.
Hi.
All right, are we ready? All right. I state your name.
I, Michael Gibson, Jr.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
And defend.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Benita Springs.
Of the city of Benita Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Council.
Of the office of City Council.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the privilege.
Thank you very much.
A pleasure to meet all of you. Good luck in your endeavors.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Well, thank you, everybody. We're now gonna call this meeting to order. If you'd all please rise, please. We're gonna have Anne Grandell with Love Inc. lead us in this evening's invocation. Welcome.
This is pretty exciting. I feel like we need to bottle champagne. Father, thank you for the beautiful land you have given us. We ask that you give these leaders and the staff your wisdom in all decisions they need to make. Expand their time, give them strategies and the resources needed to bring recovery, unity, and prosperity to our area. Give them strength and rest as they balance all the responsibilities they have in their lives. We ask you to protect them as well as all of our first responders. We pray this in faith and for your glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, amen. Councilwoman Carr, welcome. Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman Duett.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Well, good evening and welcome, everybody.
Good evening, Mayor.
We are going to start now with public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward at this time.
Mayor Simmons and council members, thank you very much. I'm actually here just to introduce some of the fine folks we have here from Pueblo Benito Boys and Girls Club. And Shannon Lane, who's the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Lee County, and Kyle Karcheski, who's our club director, and a young man right there in the blue shirt by the name of Tony Tovar, who's actually gonna be making some comments. And so, I just wanna say welcome. I'm glad these folks are here to... Gimme a hand.
Wonderful. Welcome. Other members of the public? Good evening, Kathy.
Yes, good evening, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath, just a few comments on item... Under Mayor and Councilmember Items, Item B, discuss government light and outsourcing, potential feasibility of outsourcing city legal functions. I just would like to state that, for the record, that I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public? Good evening, Dawn.
Hi. First, welcome Laura as our representative. Wish you luck, and working with you is... will be wonderful. And I'll just read the rest because I always forget what I'm saying, so. I support the mayor and council in their recommendation on 9D, and I support a charter amendment. I would like to see the wording pertaining to the existing term limits that now allows two terms as council member, then two terms as mayor, then a couple years off, and then they can start over for life. I think that should be removed and replaced. Not sure how many years it should be limited to, but we know it should not be for life with a two-year vacation every 16 years. That was never the intent of the residents of the city when they voted on the charter. And as far as 9B, city council should periodically ask fundamental questions about how their government operates and whether there might be a better way. Outsourcing the city's legal services is a strategy to lower the cost of government and to achieve higher performance and better outcomes for tax dollars spent. This concept is well-established, proven, policy-management tool. City government policymakers in almost 70% of Florida cities now outsource their legal services. These cities do not require an attorney to attend every council meeting. They do not have an attorney at planning and zoning meetings unless the council requests their presence due to a specific agenda item of concern. These cities are praising the results in higher-quality services at lower costs, delivering greater choice, and more efficient and effective government. The trend moving to outsourcing legal services is not confined to any particular region or to cities dominated by either major political party. The reason for the majority of Florida cities moving to outsource legal services is simple. It works. It introduces competition into an otherwise monopolistic system of public service delivery. Governments operate free from competitive forces and without a bottom line. City budgets are not linked to performance. Competition done right drives down costs and incentivizes performance. Applying competition forces city council to identify the true cost of doing business. Common goals of outsourcing legal services include cost savings, improved risk management by shifting major liabilities from the city taxpayer to the contractor, quality improvements, access to a larger pool of attorneys with wide variety of qualification and expertise, and innovation. The need for lower-cost, higher-quality services under competition encourages new, cutting-edge solutions to win a city contract. City council should ensure that an apples-to-apples comparison of competing bidders is made compared to all costs associated with in-house service. Some of the most prevalent areas of cities privatization includes accounting, planning and zoning, and legal services. If we are outsourcing community development to CH-2M Hill, putting it out for bids rather than just renewing their contract would be a good idea. If the city no longer outsources planning and zoning, it would be a good idea to consider it. Under Section 56 of the Charter, it is declared to be the policy of the city that its officers and employees are agents of the people and hold their position for the benefit of the public. Part 3, Chapter 112 of Florida State Statute adds that they are bound to perform their duties under the laws of the federal, state, and local governments. The people are not asking too much when asking for all of our laws to be followed by all city staff, officers, employees, and appointees. We are also not asking too much when we ask for a city manager to ensure that all state and federal laws and all the provisions of the city charter are faithfully executed as required in our Charter, Section 3060. And I just... Personally, I'm convinced that competitive model is...
What's made this country?
Hang... Absolutely. Hang on just a second. My fingers and sometimes just don't agree. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Personally, I'm convinced that the competitive model is what has made this country successful. The same competitive model can lead to a more efficient and effective city. And I thank you for your time and your service to our city.
Wonderful.
And again, I'm glad you're on board, being Laura.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dawn. Other members of the public? Good evening, Pat. Welcome.
Good evening. Pat Colley. I'd also like to comment on Agenda Item 9B regarding the feasibility of outsourcing the legal functions of the city. In my prior life, I was a general counsel of a large global auto supplier, and I outsourced tens of millions of dollars of legal services to dozens and dozens of law firms all over the world, and I found that to be a very effective model. In the last week or so, I've spoken with elected representatives of nearby cities, spoken with the Florida League of Cities, the International and Florida Associations of Municipal Attorneys. I've looked at studies and articles on this issue, and I've also looked at contracts between cities and law firms. According to the Florida League of Cities in both their 2014 and 2017 surveys, 84% of cities outsource the legal function. Now, I think that there could be four benefits to the city of outsourcing its legal functions. First, cost savings. Second, better legal representation. Third, more responsive and proactive legal services. And fourth, independent, unbiased legal advice. So, going back to those four points, in terms of costs, there are over 100,000 lawyers in the state of Florida. They are aggressive and hungry to get this work. There are a lot of law firms that specialize in representing municipal entities. They'll be aggressive in bids, whether it's fixed fees, flat rates. They're very creative and very willing to work with cities. And the city... It allows the city to pay only for what it needs. Doesn't have to worry about the fixed costs of a staff, benefits, retirement costs, et cetera. City can focus on just what it needs. A second point is, a law firm is gonna have a deeper bench, so it's going to be able to have the expertise of a number of attorneys working for many different cities, and this can't be matched by an in-house function with just a few attorneys. The law firm will also be able to gear up if a matter is urgent and needs to be, and the law firms will bid aggressively so that they can get the work when big projects come up. So, again, that's a benefit for the city as well, to have attorneys ready to go if there's a big issue. Fourth, more responsive and proactive. A law firm realizes that it can be replaced in a heartbeat by the city, and so they're always gonna be looking over their shoulder and making sure that they provide excellent legal advice in order to keep their jobs. And the last point, and this was actually points raised by elected representatives that I spoke to, they actually thought it was better to keep an arms-length relationship with their legal advice, and that's why they liked outside law firms. They felt that an outside law firm was more likely to focus on providing unbiased legal advice and leave the political fray and the political decisions to the city council where they belong. They also mentioned to me that they felt large law firms would be less likely to compromise on their beliefs or process because the city is one client, and, you know, they're gonna focus on what works for them across many clients, and an individual or small staff does not have that same dynamic to work with. That's it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good evening.
Good afternoon. My name's Shannon Lane. I am the Executive Director of your Boys and Girls Clubs here in Lee County. In addition to the one club that we have in Benita Springs, we have four more spread throughout the county, so thank you, mayor and council, for welcoming us. Before I introduce our Youth of the Year, I just want to share with you a bit about Boys and Girls Clubs. Oftentimes, people say, "Well, what is that? Why is that necessary?" And that's necessary to us because we believe a lot can be determined about a child's future and how they spend their free time, and that's where we come in. In the out-of-school hours, we provide outcome-driven programming that drives our young people in a safe and supportive environment to three main outcomes: graduating from high school with a plan, being a connected citizen to their community who is registered to vote at the time they graduate, and living a healthy lifestyle and being committed to lifelong exercise. Those are all things that we want our neighbors to share with us, and in the path of reaching those outcomes, each year, we have this pipeline of leadership where we see the younger ones mentor the... or the older ones mentor the younger members. And each year, we choose a Youth of the Year for the entire county to go compete at the state level. This year, our Youth of the Year is Mr. Tony Tovar from Pueblo Benito, and he just has a few words for you, right? About the Boys and Girls Club?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me your time for me to talk. I've been a member for Boys and Girls Club for 10 years. I'm 15-years-old, and I started going as five-years-old. The Boys and Girls Club has helped me with a lot of struggles, you know, personally. I didn't grow up with a father figure, so I didn't know how to react to an older man, but the Boys and Girls Club helped me because they had male staff there. They helped me realize that I shouldn't put my problems... I shouldn't always hold my problems. And I always struggled a lot in school. In school, my grades aren't really good, but this year, the staff members at the Boys and Girls Club helped me reach past my goal. To you, it might just seem like grades, but to me, that is a major accomplishment that this year, I've reached As and Bs. The Boys and Girls Club has helped me a lot, and not just the Boys and Girls Club, but the community, Pueblo Benito, has helped me, and we use a community center for everything. We use it for outside use, for big parties and big events that people come and help donate money, or just come and have fun with the kids because it's a life-changing experience, and it's changed my life for the better. I, one day, wanna be a first responder, so first responders, I wanna say thank you. Thank you for everything you do. I would love to either be a police officer or a firefighter, and thank you. That's it.
And Tony, we all... We're all going to be rooting for Tony next week. He leaves next Thursday, and he'll be competing at the state level, so we hope to have great news to bring back to you next month, okay?
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Other members of the public? Bernie, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, or Deputy Mayor, as it may be, members of the council. I approach the outsourcing...
Could you pull up the microphone, Bernie? I'm sorry. Thank you.
I approach the outsourcing issue from a somewhat different perspective. Like Mr. O'Flynn, I was a member of a law firm, a mid-sized law firm, 150 lawyers in Washington for forty-some-odd years, traveled around the country. Many of our clients had in-house counsel; most did not. The one thing I did find was that in-house counsel tends to build itself. A lot of these situations became fiefdoms, where a lot of work was brought in, and it wasn't necessarily any better or any efficient... any more efficient. I really believe that, given the city's financial situation today and the pressures we're receiving from IRMA and from remediation, prevention, and so on and so forth, I think it's something that the council really should... must seriously look at. It has a fiduciary obligation to the taxpayers here to husband its funds, and if they can't do that, that's... that doesn't work. This is an area that, among others, it would be nice to see a performance audit of the entire... of the entire staff, but that's expensive. But we can start with this. We need to look at it. If it's not gonna work, it doesn't work. If it's not gonna save money and provide better service, then you don't do it. But we haven't looked at it, and we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Rich Donnelly. I've lived in Benita for 27 years. I'm on the zoning board, but today, I'd like to talk to you very quickly, very briefly, about Lover's Key. I am the current president of Friends of Lover's Key State Park, and as you know, you folks have helped us a great deal to get a building built. This building will be underway this fall. It will be called the Lover's Key Welcome and Discovery Center. The word discovery, a key word, because it will be a learning center, and the building itself, a very iconic piece of architecture, will be a piece that the community can be proud of as well as the park. We still have work to do. Once the building is done, we need to fit it up. We need to put materials in it. We need AV systems. We need state-of-the-art exhibits, and to that end, we've launched a Million Five Capital Campaign. The first step in that campaign happened about a week and a half ago, where we appeared in front of the Tourist Development Council and requested a shoreline grant of $88,000. These funds, if we get them, of course, will go toward that Million and a Half fund to outfit the building. It was a very successful meeting. It was one of two that will happen. We were well-prepared. We had rangers in costumes. We had great support, and more particularly, and the reason I'm here today, is there were two of your members who were there to support us with leadership, with energy, and with good citizenship, and I'd like to thank Mike Gibson and this gentleman here, your city manager. And again, thank you to the council for all the support that you've given Lover's Key in the past. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Laura, you look comfortable there. Jolly sight, more comfortable than at the back there. And I didn't know that Amy translated into Amanda. That's the first...
Amelia.
Oh, I see. Okay. So, I have a few things I'd like to mention here, and one of them is the Block Ground 8C item. I'm in favor of that, and I'm also in favor of 9D. I... There have been some eloquent speakers here this evening in favor of outsourcing the legal affairs of the city, and they have spoken eloquently, and I listened to them, and they make some sense. Personally, it doesn't make any sense to me at all. I think it's crazy, and I'm sorry, Peter, but I don't... I don't believe in outsourcing this important function. Okay, we may be able to find somebody, but we've had this lady here for 18 years, and on the whole, she's done not a bad job. I've had a run-in with her occasionally, but I forgive her. And I... I'm sorry. It's better the devil that you know than the devil that you don't know. That's my simple answer to it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Philip...
I'm Philip Ford. I'm the new director of the Lee Building Industry Association, and I've met with the mayor and called. I just wanted to come forward and introduce myself and look forward to working with the mayor and council on many issues. We want to be a resource for the council on issues of building and development and be a partner with the city, and look forward to that. I do want to say this. I know on the issue tonight, you're going to be looking at the impact fees. I've been in Lee County dealing with that issue for a few months now, but I'll spare you the long, drawn-out pros and cons of impact fees. But I would like for you to keep one thing in mind. I know affordable housing is a big issue. Attainable housing is a big issue, not only in the city of Benita, but also in Lee County and basically throughout the country for various reasons. And I would like you to keep that in mind when considering possibly increasing these fees and the effects it has on families being able to attain housing in this city. I know that y'all recently hired a consultant to look at providing alternatives or, you know, how to get -- make housing more accessible. We'd love to work with you on that, provide alternatives. We've been talking about that internally. We need to be more proactive as an association in looking at these issues and how we can address them. And so, it's not an easy issue to fix. It's very complicated, and we need to be involved in that. But I would like you to really consider that when you're looking at the impact fee ordinance and any fee increases that might come out of that and how it would impact affordability in Benita and elsewhere. Thank you for your time.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Welcome, Jesse.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Jesse Purdon for the record. I'm here tonight to speak to you about something that's very near and dear to the heart of democracy and to the integrity of the political process. I'm here to urge you to move forward the proposed ballot initiative on term limits to second reading and ultimately take it to the people of Benita. Though I'm here to speak in favor of term limits, I do not want that to be confused with it being an attempt to shut anyone out of the process. It's not about closing the doors on the past; it's about opening doors for our future. Fresh blood is an essential piece of our democracy. Benita Springs is just 19-years-old. You sit here tonight with the ability to shape the next 50 to 100 years or beyond. Tonight, we have the opportunity to ensure real, hard-and-fast term limits without any loopholes and allow it to make it to the people. I would, however, propose that the green sheet, as written, be amended to a model that almost mirrors our state legislature. Follow me here. Our state legislature allows for two-year terms for state representatives and then allows for the upward mobility to state senate, where they, again, are limited to four two-year terms. The one thing we can do better on a city level is eliminating loophole that allows them to sit out a term and then run again. That's a true term limit. So, with the mayor being the next step for our council, in our current system, it would logically follow that you could serve two four-year terms on council and then have the ability to serve four-year -- I'm sorry, two four-year terms also as mayor, or as I would say, eight and eight, just like the state legislature, except in the Benita, there would be no retreads, there'd be no sitting out a cycle, and no returning. That's the part with the teeth. That's what ensures the fresh blood that I was alluding to earlier. Tonight, we can set the table for a new way forward. We can take steps for a pure political process that, God willing, can outlive all of us. I know it's an awkward position to ask you to vote to term yourselves. Obviously, look, U.S. Congress hasn't been able to do it since our founding, so I understand it's not an easy thing to do. But I also know each and every one of you, and I have faith that you understand that this is bigger than each and every one of us. This is about the Benita Springs of tomorrow. I urge you to amend this and to move this forward. Tonight, you have the ability to once again be a key player in Benita history. And once again, from this side of the aisle, I would like to thank you for your sacrifice. I'd like to thank you for the time, and I'd like to thank you for the leadership for the Benita Springs of tomorrow. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Okay. Great.
Excuse me. I heard that Councilmember Corumba was the one who made the motion. Who made the second?
Mike.
Mike made the motion. Laura seconded.
Oh, no, Amy seconded.
Mike made the motion. Amy seconded. Did I say that wrong?
There you go.
I think we both made the motion, so.
Simultaneously, so I guess take your pick.
I'll take second.
Either way is good.
Okay.
We passed it. That's important.
We good?
We're good.
Okay. We're now going to move on to proclamations and presentations. And if the members of the Zonta Club, Trish Leonard, Pat Calvert, Mercedes Padine, and Cindy Smith are in attendance, if you could please come forward. And Tiffany Esposito.
Hello. Welcome.
Well, welcome. Glad you could be here. This is a proclamation for Zonta Day, April 18th, 2018. Whereas Zonta has made a difference since 1919, working around the world to improve the lives of women through global service and advocacy efforts designed to promote programs to ensure the safety, education, healthcare, and overall economic sufficiency of women throughout the world. And whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs Incorporated was chartered in 1994 and is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization and is part of Zonta District 11, Area 6, Club 1482. And whereas Zonta Club of Benita Springs is an organization of business and professional women dedicated to improving the circumstances of women in all stages of life, locally and globally. And whereas the Zonta Club has awarded one woman each year since 1998 as the Woman of the Year, this woman portrays what Zonta is all about and recognizes that women at a -- that woman at a special luncheon in her honor. And whereas Zonta Club of Benita Springs has played an important role in the city of Benita Springs by providing assistance in many activities and fundraisers that are within their mission statement and offers support of organizations such as Re-threaded of Florida, not-for-profit organization that provides social entrepreneurship programs to help break the cycle of sex trade, prostitution, drug addiction, and human trafficking by offering viable and creative work, repurposing t-shirts into beautiful products made by survivors and distributed to other women locally and globally. And whereas the city of Benita Springs is proud to have such dedicated women in our community who unselfishly give of their time, energy, and resources to help those less fortunate. And whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs has supported organizations such as ACT, Shelter for Abused Women and Children, Salvation Army, Benita Assistance Office, Partners for Breast Cancer, Habitat for Humanity, Our Mother's Home, as well as contributed scholarship funds to assist women to further their education and careers for a better life. Now, therefore, I, Peter Simmons, Mayor of the City of Benita Springs, declare April 18th, 2018, as Zonta Day in the city of Benita Springs. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, April 4th, 2018. Congratulations. Do you want to say a few words? Yes.
I would. On behalf of the Zonta Club, my sister's here, we want to say thank you for this honor. Every year, we do a Woman of the Year luncheon and fundraiser to help us with what we do in our community. This year's Woman of the Year is Tiffany Esposito, and she is the CEO of the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce. But we also want to say that we have incorporated our club to say the Benita Springs Zonta Club-dash-Estero as well. So, we have reached out to our Estero sisters, and together, we will make a difference throughout the community and throughout the United States and actually throughout the world.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. This was quite fascinating. I felt like I was in a courtroom or something. I might make this part of my permanent agenda and hangout, so it was very, very neat to learn what's going on in the community. But thank you very much for honoring us, and we do have tickets to sell at the luncheon if you want to join us on April 17th, so, at Benita Bay Club.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Esposito. I am the president and CEO of the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to thank Zonta and thank the city for the continued support. I am honored to have been selected. I'm excited about the luncheon on the 17th.
Wonderful. Absolutely. Want to do a picture?
Sure. You have to reread this, you know.
Do I have to reread?
One, two, three. Perfect.
Wonderful. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Hey, sweetie. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Zonta, for all the great work you do. Is Susan Caputo here? Yours is five times as long, Susan. Are you ready? No. Welcome. How are you? Welcome. Great, great. Nice to see you. On behalf of the city of Benita Springs, welcome. This is a certificate of recognition proudly presented to Susan Caputo, Principal, Benita Springs Elementary School. In recognition of your devotion, leadership, and unwavering commitment to excellence for all the students of Benita Springs Elementary School, thank you for your vision and inspiration in enriching the educational experience of our children. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, April 4th, 2018. Thank you very much.
Please don't stand. It's been an honor and a pleasure, and they -- it's a wonderful community. Great children. I've done this. I've been in education for 45 years, and I will honestly tell you that of all the schools I've ever worked, that these children are the most wonderful, gracious, giving. They're like sponges. They just absorb, and their parents want them to learn. I have a terrific staff, and we're very grateful. So, every year is a new year of challenges, and these staff face them and goes on. I want to recognize this gentleman here who has been a supporter of Rob Benita Springs Elementary also, and we thank you too. So, thank you.
Do you know how to say his last name?
No, I can't.
Prez Beluski. Prez. It's Irish, is.
I know that he and his staff came and provided -- well, they did the essay contest at Christmas. Yeah, and they do the gifts at Target and all that, and the children just love it, so.
Dynamite. Well, congratulations for everything you do. This is a presentation by Mr. David Hanson, President of Partnership in Housing, regarding the possibility of additional funds to be utilized from the city's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG allocation for the expansion of Pueblo Benito Community Center. And this is Green Sheet 18-040085. And the errata sheet included renderings and floor plan for expansion. Hi, Arlene.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Arlene Hunter, Assistant City Manager, for the record. In July of 2015, the city council approved utilization of CDBG funds for $125,000 for the expansion of the Pueblo Benito Center. Along that pathway, they have gone through quite a bit of environmental permitting. Their building permits are now in place, and they have gone through a bid process for a contractor following the federal guidelines for the CDBG program. That has provided them a shortfall, unfortunately, of $160,000 to $170,000. Mr. David Hanson, President of the Partnership for Housing, has requested an opportunity through the mayor to present a request to see if there's an additional allotment of funds available for that shortfall. They will also be discussing other partnership and other funding that they're looking at as well.
Okay. Thank you, Arlene.
Mayor, council members, Dave Hanson, for the record, President of Partnership in Housing. And I've seen you here before on a similar item, and I just want to say thanks that the city of Benita Springs has historically and faithfully, without wavering, been supportive of the programs that we have at Pueblo Benito and of the community. And I also want to take an opportunity to thank my board and the staff, and also the people that contribute to the Boys and Girls Club. I don't get over there as often as I'd like, but I'll tell you what, with Kyle now on board and Shannon, of course, you go over there and there's volunteers all over the place. I mean, it's just a wonderful experience. I've shared that with you before, and it remains the same today. I think the club and the community is just as vibrant and forward-looking as it ever has been. And before I talk numbers, I just want to say that in addition to Boys and Girls Clubs and expanding the program there, we also are interested in talking with the city about what might be done down the road for affordable housing, primarily as it fits into our purview of affordable rental housing. As Arlene mentioned, our original budget was right around $300,000. We had meetings with John Gucciardo and Arlene, and we came up with kind of a match of $125,000 to be put in by Partnership in Housing and a CDBG grant of $125,000 to be contributed by the city. I think that the memo that I sent to all of you a week and a half or so ago really does kind of, in short, tell you where we stand. However, the shortfall, which was going to be around $170,000, and we didn't know where we were going to come up with that, has kind of shrunk. You know, we're working with the contractor, but in addition to that, we've been able to secure about $100,000 of our own internal funding that we've gotten from an insurance reserve fund that we carry. And so, we're looking at around $60,000 or $70,000. Having said that, we are considering additional sources of funding. Timing is such that we've kind of got to get this thing on the roll. And so, we just wanted to inquire as to whether the city might have somewhere, someplace, some kind of additional financial help that you could provide to us. Again, we're committed to this project, one way or another, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention and, you know, make an appeal to see if there may be something available in addition to what you've already provided. I would say that what we're probably looking at is in the neighborhood of around $40,000. It was 80, I think the original communication indicated 80 and 80. But, you know, I think we're paring that down, and we're trying to be creative as far as where we, you know, what socks and what mattresses we turn over. And so, I think we'll be able to come up with most of it. But again, if the city could see fit to provide $30,000, $40,000, that would be very helpful. And we consider you folks really our partners. It's Partnership in Housing for good reason. And the fact that the city's been historically supportive of our mission gives us a good feeling. We feel confident that we can come to you without, you know, feeling like we're stepping on, you know, glass. And so, we leave it up to you, and if you have any questions for me specifically about the budget or how we got here or anything at all, I'll be happy to answer that.
Great. Thank you.
Questions?
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Fred?
I've got one. In your figures that you've presented, do you have any kind of a contingency for -- in the trade change orders? Because usually, construction goes up over what it's originally supposed to.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we've got to remember our initial budget was put together in the beginning of 2015.
Yeah.
With the -- With the environmental costs that Arlene spoke about. And Hurricane Wilma, or Wilma, Hurricane Irma. Wilma did too. But Irma, you know, has driven costs up somewhat. But we typically use about an 8% contingency in our budgeting. And we have a final number, 356,000 plus a little extra for this, a little extra for that. But in our basic budgets, 356, which we feel is pretty reasonable since a third-party contractor gave us a budget of 386. And one of the other bidders, the next, the closest bidder was 450. So we feel that this, it made me spin. I couldn't believe that we're looking at over $200 a square foot. But it is what it is. One of the reasons I think that the costs have gone up is because when you look at the aerial of our property, we are nudging, you know, just elbow room between the building site and the existing preserve and the buffer, the upland buffer. And so, in order to get all that done, there's going to be a lot more crane work and, you know, things of that nature. They're going to have to bring in a lot more equipment that allow them to reach the building site and do the project appropriately, so.
I could, I personally could support, given what you've asked myself. I don't know about that. I don't want to speak for them.
Mike, you had a question then, Peter?
I didn't have a question, I was.
Oh, comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say I'd be fine with doing the 40,000.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a suggestion. I talked to Dave about it earlier. And Dave, Arlene, Matt and I met a year ago with respect to that FPL power easement that they own. And we all know what a great organization it is, and we've known that for a long time. And frankly, at that point, Dave and some were suggesting the possibility that that easement, which could be part of a bike trail as appropriate in the future, could actually possibly be even a gift to the city. So that shows you where their heart is. We ran into some issues about access and such, which are fair issues. I think one possible win-win here is actually for us to give the appropriate amount of money to Partnership in Housing of Pueblo Benita in return for that. And I do think that's something to think about. And the only other thing is, I think it's important to put it in context that, and Dave is right, it's like family, we're talking like family. But, you know, the context is that we have charities like, you know, New Horizons, Cafe of Life, Literacy Council, even the Y, even the Art League, that help hundreds and hundreds of kids here as well. And thank God we have them. That's the backbone of the city. We don't have, unfortunately, a budget for that. That's Lee County's budget. That's the billion-dollar budget, where the $12 million operating budget. So, I'm just making the suggestion as a way to get money as appropriate to Pueblo Benita in return for something that, you know, they have and frankly, we're on the verge of giving to us a while ago.
I was going to say, you guys drive a hard bargain. You're going from zero to $40,000. We'll take it.
Yeah.
You know, the issue really wasn't the financial.
Exactly.
As I mentioned to you before, Peter.
Right.
It was, there was no real way to get to the rest of the bike trail, the proposed bike trail, unless you went through Pueblo Benito.
Right.
And believe me, that was like a cold fish.
And that should be respected, in my view. In other words.
So I don't know how we could get around that. I'm willing to talk about it.
Yeah, I think the answer is, in my view, how we get around it is we don't go through Pueblo Benito. But this is longer-term planning for the future of Benita Springs.
Right.
And, you know, in my view, we would not go through, just like we were chatting about, Dave, eight months ago, whatever it was, we would not go through Pueblo Benito without their approval.
Right.
So it's just an idea, I think, to kind of get them what they want and basically kind of bring to closure what was almost going to be a gift anyhow.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks. Counsel, Laura?
I agree.
Okay, okay. Wonderful. Greg?
I just had one question for Dave. Is kind of like the Friends of Lovers key, do you, I don't want to be Santa Claus, but is this enough to outfit it also with furniture, computers, what you need on the inside? Because, you know, I don't want to see this thing.
That's not part of the budget.
Well, I know it's not part of the budget, but I mean, I just look at it as a year from now, 18 months from now, this is built, now you're coming back to us and saying, hey, can you help us with this also? If we can do some of it now, do a little now and a little bit more later on, if that's an issue.
If you look at the club now, and I think Shannon and Kyle will tell you, it's pretty Spartan in there. All we have is moving tables and chairs that move around and, you know, bookcases and supplies. So I can't see any substantial budgetary needs for outfitting the center.
Okay, I just hate to see this beautiful building.
Oh, no.
And then have something, it remain empty.
Sure, no, uh-uh. No, that's definitely not going to happen.
All right.
I just have a question for Arlene or Carl. What, where would we get this? We're not suggesting we're taking out of the already allocated CDGB funds for the.
Can I make a suggestion? My idea would come, no, it would come out of the bike fund.
It would come out of the bike fund?
Yeah, yeah. Of course, it's for.
Oh, because you want to trade that in?
Yeah.
You're betting on the future, though.
Yeah, no, understood. But it may get built when we're not here, but at least we're.
At least we'll have it.
Additionally, just to clarify as well on the green sheet is, you did, we do have a signed contract for $308,849 for the bicycle pedestrian pathway. That's the 2017 funds. We have another additional allotment of $348,738. And that is been committed, the discussions of council have been to commit it to bicycle pedestrian pathways as we receive the results from Alta. But we do not have a signed contract for that, so it's considered unallocated, but the discussions have been that it would go towards the bicycle pedestrian path. We do other, we also have some carryover funds and some program income, but all that, we'll also be getting our new allocation coming for the 2018, 2019, which will be coming shortly with a proposal, with a recommendation from staff to do that, to designate for infrastructure as well, again.
I'd like to make a motion that we progress with Dave on this swap idea.
Second. Okay. Counsel, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caromba?
Aye.
Councilman Duit?
Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item D now. Receive an impact fee study findings, discuss and provide direction to staff on whether to draft in ordinance to implement the new fees. And this is green sheet 18-040087.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, we are presenting an impact fee study that had been requested by council some time ago. We retained the firm of Duncan Associates headquartered out of Texas to conduct that study. They are well-known experts in this particular field. Clancy Mullin is here. He's a principal of the firm, and he is here to present the results of the study which were forwarded to you late last week.
Great. Welcome.
Pleasure to be here. My name is Clancy Mullin, President of Duncan Associates. I'd like to start off with just an overview of the presentation. I'm going to try to keep it brief. A little background about where, you know, how we got the fees that you have now. First thing I want to really after that talk about is the changes we're proposing to the land use categories. Then talk about the road impact fee update, not in a lot of detail, but show you, you know, make the main points, what the main changes were that we made and suggested, what the recommended fees are, how they compare to the existing fees, compare that to what your neighbors are charging. And we're going to do the same for parks and then look at a comparison of the total fees compared to other, excluding water and wastewater, but the total non-utility impact fees compared to your neighboring jurisdictions. All right, a little bit of background. The road fees were, are based on a study that was done that we did back in 2007. So they're about, so 10 years old. They have been adjusted for inflation twice in 2009 and 2010. There haven't been any inflation adjustments since. So the fees today are about 6% higher than the fees that were calculated back in 2007. And it also point out that the city has decided to, as you know, basically subsidize hotel motel fees because you noticed at some point that they were higher than what other jurisdictions were charging. We're hoping this update rectifies that. Those fees do come down about 30%. But we'll talk about some issues related to singling out particular land uses for special treatment. And then the park fees are still the park fees that the city basically inherited from the county when you incorporated back in 2000. The regional park fees that they were charging at the time are the ones that you're still charging. We did a study in 2005 that had the fees coming down. Those fees weren't adopted. You just kept the fees that you'd inherited for the county. So those fees are quite old in terms of the basis for the fees. All right. Well, let's talk about the land uses. And I had to break this into two parts. I wanted to kind of go through in a little bit of detail and talk about what changes we're recommending. And there's a couple of things driving this. One of them was the fact that the Institute for Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, now in the 10th edition, when the fees were last updated, we were on the 7th edition from 2003. 10th edition just came out this last year. So, and there've been a lot, and this 10th edition made a lot of changes. So some of the categories that we had before that the fees were based on don't exist anymore in the newest Trip Generation Manual. There are some other issues that we'll talk about in some detail. Another one was with the addition of some land use categories, staff expressed the desire to have pretty definitive definitions of these categories, so you can tell one from another. And in the process of trying to develop those definitions, we modified some of our initial recommendations, so, to help with impact fee administration. And the third reason really, I guess, is to be as consistent as possible with what the county charges, because that's also what Astero bases their fees on. So they basically charge, they take the county's study, the county's fees, and adopt them. And Fort Myers does too. So just to be consistent with your neighbors.
Can I ask you just a quick question, because it's important on interpretation? When you say the county fees, you mean what the county can charge or what the Lee County Commission is adopting?
Well, right now, I'm just talking about their categories.
Okay, so it's what they could charge?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Well, the categories that are in the fee schedule, not the amounts in the fee schedule.
He's not talking numbers yet. He's just talking.
Just talking about concepts.
And you're right, there are differences in how much they charge. Astero adopts.
I misunderstood, thank you.
Astero adopts the maximum fees.
Right.
Except for schools, they adopt that collection rate. And Fort Myers adopts the collection rate.
All right, so you're not talking about that, you're just talking about.
But they all use the same categories.
Categories, thank you.
Yeah, so to the extent we can, we try to be consistent with that.
Okay.
So, single-family detached didn't change, kind of go down the list here. Now, multifamily, the Trip Generation Manual used to have an apartment category. They don't have that anymore. They have three types of multifamily, three categories. Low-rise, which is one to two stories, mid-rise, three to 10 stories, and high-rise, over 10 stories. And so, you know, do you need to adopt all those categories? Not necessarily. I don't know that you are going to get high-rises in Benita Springs in the near future. The county adopted all three, and so some of your neighbors are going to have those same categories. But, so the idea was floated, and we were discussing with staff, can we just have one category? Just keep a multifamily category? The question becomes, what do you base it on? Do you base it on the mid-rise? Because I'm sure you have some three-story apartments, apartment buildings or multifamily buildings. And if you base it on the one to two-story, basically you're overcharging the mid-rises. So, so at this point, we decided we'll just go with the three categories and you can give us direction if you want to do something different. Another issue here is timeshares, which are treated differently in your different fees. In your road fees, it's grouped with hotels. So it's hotel motel, our timeshare, something that the county does too. In coming up with the definitions, we thought as a consultant that timeshare really probably fits better. I mean, timeshare is really an ownership type, right? Or it's a regime, it's not a structure type. I mean, timeshares are multifamily dwelling units. But they happen to be rented out differently. So they have some characteristics that are similar to hotel motel, some that are similar to apartments, which is more appropriate. We thought it was more appropriate with the multifamily. So that's what we're recommending at this point in the current draft of the study. We could go back to having them with hotel motel if that's what the council would prefer. Those fees are lower than the multifamily fees. Although your current park fees, timeshares are about double the hotel motel rate, or the apartment rate, for some reason. I don't know what was going on back in 2000. Actually, we were a consultant for the county in 2000, but I don't remember that at all, where that came from. Anyway, enough about multifamily. Mobile home park, RV park, our, well, it's a little bit unclear what your current ordinance. Your current ordinance says mobile home slash RV park pad or site. Does that only apply to mobile home parks? Mobile homes outside of mobile home parks? How are those treated? The way the county does it and the way that we would recommend doing it is a mobile home located outside of mobile home park would be treated like a single-family detached unit. You know, the mobile home park rate is based on kind of a, you know, the fact that you have a mobile home park, you have certain amenities on-site, that reduces your trips. Whereas a single-family detached unit or a mobile home that's in a single-family neighborhood is just going probably, going to generate trips more like a single-family detached. But that's a choice you can make, but I just wanted to alert you to what's in the draft or what's in the recommendation in the current study. And also, basically to combine those, because in your park fees, they're separated out. You have a different rate for RV park than you have for mobile home park. I don't know what that RV park rate is based on. I don't know how to replicate that, so we combined them into one. Elderly disabled housing is a current category in your road fee schedule, not in the parks' fees, but in your road fees. And that's based on definitions meeting qualifying for federal assistance as either disabled or elderly housing, senior housing. The IT manual, and that was based on a, in the last, or in previous Trip Generation manuals, based on a detached elderly housing unit. Well, the new, the new manual has senior adult housing detached and senior adult housing detached with kind of squishy definitions. We were proposing to define those, to basically distinguish those from other apartments or multifamily units on the basis of their age restricted. So you know you're getting. So you know you're getting senior citizens, basically, elderly or older people, not, not kids. So, so that's kind of a big change from your current one. I mean, the current category is very restrictive. I mean, not very many developments that are age restricted are going to qualify for that lower rate. So this would mean any age-restricted development would, would qualify for a lower road impact fee rate. ACLF, basically, we still have an ACLF category, Del Congregate Living Facility. But the new manual has a continuing care retirement community category that we proposed to add. Hotel motel or timeshare, we've already talked about that. Convenience store gas sales now is per thousand square foot. The new, the new Trip Generation Manual breaks that into two categories. Convenience store with gas sales, less than ten vehicle fueling stations or ten or more. And the, what the county used anyway, decided to go to was per pump or per vehicle's fueling station to base the fee on. So, so that's, that's another kind of significant change. Not too many in the rest of them. We, we, on the restaurants, we got restaurant sit-down, restaurant fast food. Probably better terminology would be restaurant standard, restaurant drive-through is what we're suggesting for the, rather than fast food. Because we were trying, the county went with four categories. Quality or sit-down restaurant, a high turnover restaurant, a fast casual restaurant, and a fast food restaurant. And, you know, it's very difficult to figure out how you would classify restaurants into so many categories. So that was our initial, in our initial draft, that's what we had. When we tried to come up with definitions for those categories, we decided, okay, maybe we just keep it simple. If it's a drive-through or a drive-in restaurant, it gets one fee. Any other restaurant, we just give them the lower fee as a restaurant. So, that's that, that change. Down under elementary school, we're proposing a new category for public institutional. So we have several kind of public institutional uses, nursing home, place of worship, daycare center, elementary school, secondary school. But what about the other stuff? You know, there's other things. When you get a junior community college, something like that. So, we're proposing a more of a catch-all category for things that aren't classified elsewhere. So you don't have to do some kind of end up saying, okay, well, it doesn't fit anything in our, in our fee schedule, we'll have to come up with something individually for you. And the rest of them, well, we got a new high cube warehouse, the county adopted that, which is a lower warehouse fee for a particular kind of warehouse that's highly automated. That's, they've had for quite a few, several years. And then minor quarry, they added a few years ago too, so we decided, well, we'll throw that in. I don't know if you guys get a lot of that or not, but anyway. So that covers the land uses. Anybody got any questions about those before we move on to the roads?
Counsel?
I just had one quick one. When, you talked about the senior housing, in what age? Does it matter? I mean, it says age restricted. What's the age?
That's not really pinned down in our definition at this point.
Just if you have a requirement, let's use Valencia Lakes, a new community coming on.
Yeah, we would have, we would have to tighten up that definition when, pick an age, fifty-five, I don't know, sixty-five?
I think federal fifty-five.
Fifty-five, I think.
What the standard is in the industry, but.
Good question. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
So for the, for the road impact fee update, we're updating the cost information, of course. We looked at what the, what all the counties cost. The, the city's only had one recent road project that really added lanes or built new lanes. And that was the Shangri-La Road Project, completed in two thousand and fourteen. The cost of that project was a little lower than the average of all the county projects. About six percent, seven percent lower, seven percent, no. And so we went with that. So that may, means your fees are a little lower than what the county came up with. We could just go, we could average it in, we could do it a little differently, but it just seemed reasonable to take the most local cost that's, you know, by comparing it to the county's cost, we can tell it's slightly lower, but it's definitely in the ballpark. The travel demand factors, we talked about the, the tenth edition of the, of the Trip Generation Manual. And, and the land use categories, obviously, we talked about that already. So those are kind of the highlights of the road update. So I'm showing you the fee comparisons here, and I don't want to delve into this. And it also took two, two slides and it's, and it's, it's table one in the report too. So if you ever want to refer to it, you don't need to go to the PowerPoint. But you can see here that the, that the fees are going up and down for different categories pretty significantly. And I think, you know, you know, a question has been raised about, do we have to kind of adopt all of these fees, you know, can we keep some of the fees that, that, that we don't want to see changed? And really, if you, if you adopt the new fees, you need to adopt them for all the land uses, you need to maintain that proportionality to impact. Notice, notice particularly that the hotel motel fee, which is in bold there, is down thirty percent compared to your current fee. But it's, it's kind of all over the map, you know, depending, and that, that's, you know, the new ITE manual and several other factors have contributed to that.
I, I just have a question about the different heights on the multi-family. I don't see the logic of why that would go down the higher it is. How does that, is that just?
Why they go, with a taller building, it would be.
Is that just because they assume trip generations are different? I, I don't understand that at all, the logic of that. Where does that come from?
Well, that comes from a lot of studies that the Institute for Transportation Engineers has done around the country.
But it's on trip generation?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's my question. So they assume that.
For some reason, they generate fewer trips. Maybe you have fewer families, you know, maybe they have, they own fewer cars. I'm, I'm not sure what all the factors that cause that, but we do have the data that shows, you know, the taller the building, the less trips per unit it's going to generate.
I got a quick question.
Yeah, Greg, please.
Table one in your slide is different.
Yeah, I, I was going to bring that up also. The numbers don't dive with what we have.
Yeah, the numbers don't jive with, I mean, I printed out what we got and what's in the green sheet, it's two different numbers, like.
They're close.
They're close, like, single family's seven percent up here, on ours, it's nine. The hotel motel's thirty up there, twenty, twenty-nine on ours.
I apologize, I apologize. I must not have updated, because I, I was working on the presentation and then I made changes to the, to the report, you know, and didn't go back apparently and change the, but the, the numbers in the report should be correct. So sorry about that. Yeah, I wouldn't think they would have changed very much.
I mean, a couple of percents, like one of them's, what was it, thirty-five versus the senior adult? Thirty-three, thirty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I mean, it's a couple of percentage points.
President Bush called that fuzzy math. Fuzzy numbers.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Okay. So just sort of a visual comparison to your, to your, to other communities in the, in the, in the region. We got Fort Myers Beach over here. So in orange, we have sort of your comparison communities. The green is where you are now, the red is what's proposed. So this is for a single-family road impact fees. So you can see that the road impact fee, the proposed fees are up a little bit. Obviously, you're, you're higher than Lee and Fort Myers, which both adopted those fees at forty-five percent. You're lower than Astero, which is what the, what the Lee County study calculated. What they adopted is their base fee. But they're not going to be charging that for the next five years, apparently, because they did a five-year.
When did they adopt that, Lee County? Couple days, I mean, a couple of months ago?
About a month ago.
Month ago.
Last month, I think. Yeah. So, and you're, you're a little higher than Cogar County as well. And I, and I talked about the asterisks down there already, so I won't get into that. Well, I didn't want to talk about hotel motel rent, uh, fees. And did a comparison there, just kind of know you're interested in that. Benita Springs currently is the green bar, so you are really out of step with pretty much everybody else, a lot higher. And I think that's just the, the fact that your fees have not been updated in so long, at least part of, part of the reason. Based on the ITE manual show, because those trip generation rates have come down considerably.
Real quick on that one, is that based on our current one that we just adopted?
That's on the full rate, not the reduction.
Okay, that's on the full rate, gotcha.
That's the full rate, right, right. And then the red would be the updated fee. So you can see you'd be a little lower than Astero, which is adopting the, the full Lee County fee. But of course, you're going to be higher, or higher than the county or Fort Myers, which are going with the forty-five percent collection rate. So, so, but what I wanted to say about that, I guess, before we move on, is that, you know, you're reducing those fees right now about, you're, I think you're assessing about fifty-seven percent of the fee, about a little more than half of what the, what the fee was calculated to be. And you're subsidizing that, as I understand it, with general fund revenue. I mean, you're basically making up that money with general fund revenue because you want to encourage hotel motel development. Make, make it more providing incentive for that. And that's fine, and, you know, if you want to be competitive with the county, with the unincorporated area, you might want to keep doing it, you know, do it at forty-five percent, you'd be lower than they are. But if you don't do it for all your other fees, it does kind of pose an issue because new development that comes in and pays their fee and, and they're not getting a reduced fee, they're going to be generating money every year, right, that goes into the general fund. And that money will then turn around and be used to subsidize fees for hotel, hotel motel uses. So it puts a little bit more burden on them. And we can calculate a credit to basically lower all the fees a little bit that would get rid of that potential issue. And I'm not sure how big an issue that is. I mean, that may not be a big issue if there's not a whole lot of hotel motel development. But anyway, it just sort of complicates things. So if you don't feel like you have to do it, it would be better not to, to discharge everybody, you know, the, the, the calculated fee, the proportionality of the impact is what we'd recommend.
So, I just have a quick question on that. So you're, you're saying that we're subsidizing because we have that reduction? So does that mean we're actually taking money out of the general fund and putting it in?
That was my understanding.
Is that, let's be honest, or are we just not collecting?
No, we're just not collecting.
Okay, so we're not actually having to pay money out of the general fund, we're just not getting as much money into the impact fees?
Right, exactly.
But it is the case that if we need to build something, we have to subsidize because they're not paying the full cost of the, of like the roads or the park. Is it, that, by doing this, that's what you're doing?
Right, I mean, if you've got a project cost and you've got, money's enough through the road impact fees to do it, you're going to do it. However, if, if there aren't enough road impact fees to do it, given not just that project, but the other ones in line, then yes, it's going to come out of general fund, gas tax, whatever it might be.
Right. And so, you know, by not collecting, so you may not be putting the money in directly into the fund and then, and then using it to build the improvement. But you're spending other money on the improvement, essentially the, the effect is, is the same. You have less money overall to spend for roads.
I have, I don't know if you want to address this, but I didn't quite understand this notion about doing level of service so that you don't, again, distort what you're doing. So how do you incorporate that with the pedestrian, multimodal model? Because of level of service, we have cars, basically, right? So how do you incorporate multimodal into the impact fees? I don't quite understand what you said.
Well, in terms of.
On page seven. You tried to explain it, but I didn't follow it.
Okay. Well, you can use the impact fee money for multimodal improvements. You can use them for hike and bike trails, you can use them for other things that provide mobility. But when we calculate the fees, we're trying to come up with, with basically the equivalent of the, of the vehicle mile of capacity. I mean, because that's something that's relatively easy to quantify what the cost of that is. Much more, much more difficult to quantify what, what's the cost of an intersection improvement. I mean, how many vehicle miles of capacity does that add? Very difficult to quantify it.
The reason why I ask is because we are going full bore into doing multimodal paths within the city and we basically don't have them in the normal sense. So we, I think we need that, those kinds of resources in order to implement what we think is our vision. So if we cannot get it through the impact fees, because we're focusing on customary level of service, which is based on the vehicles, then how are we taking care of that cost? Even if we can use the road impact fees to pay for the bikes, that's an, an addition to what we need to do other roads. So I don't see how you can really cover that.
Well, it's all, it's all transportation, you know, and it.
But if you put in a new project.
It's moving people around.
Both roads and, and then we want to make all our entire community bike and pedestrian friendly, that seems like two costs, not one cost. And if we're basing our, our revenues on just the, the road cost, I don't see how we're taking care of that.
Well, I mean, the idea of multimodal is that you're reducing the need for automobile traffic. It provides an alternative way to get around.
Is that true, really? Are we just encouraging?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Anyway, yeah, I mean, so if you can spend the, you can spend the money there.
I know you can do that, but it's, it doesn't seem like we're providing for it, that was my question.
So, did your question get answered?
Not really, but I mean, basically, I still don't think we're providing for it, but if this is the way we have to do it, then, you know, we have to just provide it in a different way, either through grants or through our general fund.
Yeah.
And I think when you go for, to a transition where you're not car-centric, this is, creates a problem because we're using a different vision that existed for the past, you know, fifty years in trying to go into a new kind of thing. So we can't really apply that kind of analysis that's car-centric on a total multimodal kind of vision. I think it's hard. But I could be wrong, we'll see.
John or Carl, do you have anything to add to that? Or, I mean, I don't want Councilwoman Corumba to not have a complete answer.
Well, I don't think there is an answer, but it's okay. It's, it's a concern that I have and you'll just deal with it.
To the, we have discussed this before, and I think it came up when we were looking at bus stops and the improvements to bike lanes and realized that those fees could also be applied back and forth. So what we're doing, and the way we've kind of lined up with what your vision was with our revenue sources, was to, because we had the flexibility, all of that road impact fee would be used plus however, whatever other funding sources you needed to construct those roadways. So, at this point, it wasn't, we don't currently have a system that anticipates all the multimodal, but what we're doing is applying those fees we collect to all of those different phases of, of a roadway. And I, it, so, we didn't exactly get there, but we're trying to, as best we can, get there.
So for, we're just substituting our multimodal, multimodal projects for road projects that would normally be incorporated into these kinds of impact fees?
As I understand it, I think it's the other way around. We're, we're taking the standard road impact fees and we're applying them to multimodal.
Multimodals.
Yes, ma'am.
Might have reversed it, but that's what we're doing. So we're not providing for both because we're, we can't. But we're, we're basing what could be spent on the, on the multimodal on what would be trip generations for cars.
Well, to date, we haven't made any of those improvements. What we are doing is trying to put ourselves financially in a position to accommodate those improvements when they do occur. So all of, all of these scenarios you're presenting are, need to be presented in the future tense because none of them have occurred as of yet.
It's okay.
But when they are, it's going to be coming out of road impact fee money to do both of those. The road improvement or additional to the multimodal.
That, that is correct. I mean, the council's, the council's vision has been that. I mean, the council's, the council's vision has been that we have the roads we have, we are not going to reduce those roads, we're not going to reduce the number of lanes. We're going to increase connectivity, we are going to have connected networks throughout the city. Those networks would need to be handled through either agreements with relative developers or through our road impact fees or gas taxes, whatever we might be able to use. But also, the philosophy that we are hopefully reducing vehicular traffic to some extent with regards with multimodal paths, bicycles, pedestrians, and that, and the like. And John's exactly right. The system that exists right now for developing fees typically deals with vehicular counts, all right? Now, we recently put into place a counter for pedestrians and for bicyclists around the middle school, and we're, we're doing that check. But it's not related to this. So, we understand the point, I don't think we have a great answer, other than what we've already given, which is you've got a pot of money, there's so much money in it, and it's going to be up to council over time to decide how to best use those funds towards the council's vision. Fred and then Greg.
Couple points. Could we have created a new line item for the multimodal pass in addition to the road impact fees?
Like a separate impact fee for that?
Yes.
Well, it'd be very difficult to do, because, I mean, one of the principles of impact fees is you base your fee, you know, the new guy coming in should only pay for the level of service you have now.
Right.
To maintain that, not to improve it for everybody. So to have growth pay for it when you don't have much of a level of service now would, would be difficult to come up with much of a fee, for one thing. So you have to, you have to, you have to...
A different, different question. Is there any way that these fees on road impact fees could be higher than you're showing? Because, number one, you can, you can take any road in Benita, and any traffic engineer can come up with, this lane is failing, it needs to be a wider road, and all that. And we kind of, we get, we're, we have a lot of traffic here in us. Not only caused from the new development in Benita, but somehow Benita is so centrally located that we're kind of the exit off Fort Myers Beach. So a lot of our, even some of our neighborhood roads get more traffic because the main road is plugged, so shoves more of our traffic over onto the side roads. So I'm just asking if we've explored all the avenues to run these fees up.
And then, interestingly enough, Fred, to that point, Vanderbilt Road, sir, I'm not trying to insult you, but in a, you know, we have a split road that's actually split between two counties, which is kind of an escape road, if you will, from the beach, Vanderbilt Road, which runs north and south. It's kind of an odd line there between Benita Springs, Naples, Lee County, Collier County, so... Just throwing that out to cloud it up a little bit, I guess, Greg?
I guess, I got two questions, a comment and a question. I guess the first comment is to Audrey and/or Carl. These road impact fees can be used for future additional multimodal. If we want to put a wider bike path in there, we can use those for that.
As long as you are increasing capacity as you can.
Okay. Second part of it is, is more of a comment or a question. Just looking at the fees on page sixteen, and you put that the last time we had any work done was in Shankar Law, and was based on cost for, I'm assuming V M C is vehicle motor count, which is four oh four. Up around the Summerlin, two thousand thirteen, two thousand thirteen, two thousand seventeen, in Fort Myers, they had road done. It was all six twenty-five, six twenty-two, six eighty-six, six eighty-six, for an average of six forty-four. That's about a fifty-nine percent difference of what we're going to base our new fee on. So going back to Councilman Forbes, how can we get more money? I would say get more in line with what the real costs are for road improvements are.
Well, I mean, if you look at, you know, we did, we show the, the average for these Lee County projects.
Well, that's an average.
Four hundred thirty-three dollars.
And I understand that, but, I mean, some of these, I'm, you know, look at these two twenty, when they're to be completed in two thousand twenty-one, still six thirty-five, twenty twenty. You know, from two thousand thirteen out to the two thousand twenty-two, they're not the hundred and twelve dollars that you were seeing back in twelve, eleven, and ten.
Well, yeah, I mean, it happens to be that way, although, you know, you look at more projects around the state, you're going to find it varies so much from one project to another, it depends on the right, how much right of way do you need? Some projects you don't need right of way for, some, some you have, you know, structure issues.
I understand that, not to be argumentative, but...
Right.
We're not Palatka, St. Johns County, Palatka, Florida, we're Southwest Florida, and that's, these are what it's based on. The impact fee should be based on what's happened in this area right here, not what's happening in Key West, Florida, or Tallahassee, Florida. It's what's happening in Southwest. That's why you, from the terminology and the, and the man, you asked what we've done lately and what the surroundings. And in my previous job, or my other job, when you did the fire impact fees, you looked at all the districts in Lee and Lee County on what it costs to build a fire station, buy a fire truck, and you averaged all those. And I guess that's what I'm looking at, in a timeframe. And I'm saying if we go to the recent, from two thousand thirteen, to what's projected out to two thousand twenty-two, what is that average compared to what we're being charged right now?
Fred?
Two, two, I have a comment and then a question. Comment is this, that Shankar Law, my understanding, is one of the reasons it was so expensive. It was an extraordinary amount of drainage work done. Secondly, Benita, as you well know, was the third worst affected in the flooding that we had after Irma, which probably means that when we build new roads or paths, we're going to be higher on that proper drainage over other areas of Lee County that didn't flood as bad. Now, the last question I have to ask, those were comments. If, based on the discussion we've had with you now, if you could have had that earlier, would it have affected anything that you've done?
I don't know that it would have, but, but I mean, you know, the point's well taken, you could, you know, I mean, there's nothing scientifically precise about the way it's been done. We wanted to come up with a reasonable fee, taking a broad range of projects, as many projects we could find. And then we went with the local project, which is actually a little bit lower than that average. I mean, instead, you could average your project in with, you know, more recent Lee County projects or even future projects. So, you know. If, if it seems like these fees are too low, we could take a look at that, if that's...
Well, that, I guess that's my, my question, because I, I know different council members may have had different expectations out of what was going to come out of this. And you've, I think you've gotten a taste of that, so I guess my question is, would it be, could we have you look at it just to come back, even if it's by phone or email or whatever, with some additional thoughts on what we might do differently now that we've had this, some discussion? Because I know Councilman Corumba's had a, a lot of questions, I've had some, I'm sure the mayor has, Greg's got his points, so...
Yeah, sure.
So, Mr. Mayor? Yes. May I ask your question? So, Clancy, let me just ask the question. If we were to say, thank you for this work, but we're going to adopt the county's schedule, would we be better off overall, in your opinion?
Oh, adopt their base?
Adopt their, their base fees.
Their base.
Well, I mean, you're pretty, but, we've localized it somewhat, I mean, we have relied on quite a bit of county data, as you can tell from the cost section. But, you know, the more, the more local we can make it, the better. But, yeah, I mean, that, that's another possibility, you could do that. I mean, just as Astero has done it in Fort Myers.
Amy and then Peter, I know Amy had a question, then Pete.
I just wondered if we had any idea of what potential revenue this would generate for, let's say, what we did over the past year compared to what our current state, current fee schedule is here? Is this, I can't tell if this is an improvement, or if revenue's going to go up or go down.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you can look at, yeah, it, it really is hard to tell, because it, it varies so much from land use to land use. I mean, you'd almost have to take, look at all the land uses that you had, and say, okay, what...
Look at our projects that we have.
What would the fee have been if this new fee schedule had been in place?
Well, that's the question, because, and again, just judging, inferring from some of the questions from council, I'm not sure, are we, are we trying to raise more revenues, or what's the intent of doing this? I thought we were, part of this was to be more competitive with other communities so that the development that we want to attract here comes here. And I, I think I actually voted against the discount for the hotel, because I didn't feel that we needed any more hotels. So, you know, I think we need to clarify what we're trying to accomplish by this review of our impact fee. And I'm, and I am not, I don't know if I want increased fees or not. I think I just want to be in line with the competitive aspects of the other communities so that we get the proper development, and we get the kind of development that we want. I think that's more important than getting the revenues. But I don't know how anybody else feels.
Thanks. Peter?
Yeah, I just had two comments, one is I agree with Greg's comments about the more current numbers and Carl's concept of looking at the full Lee. The only other observation I have is on that hotel chart, the one place with the highest fee schedule, I think, was Astero. And in today's Naples Daily News, there's an article about four hotel projects that are on the move in Astero.
Yeah, and they haven't adopted these fees yet. And the county's fees haven't gone into place yet either, but...
Astero's, okay.
Mike, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to say, I don't think it's really a matter of getting more taxes coming in. I think it's more a matter of being fair and equitable to everybody, so that we, you know, go with an updated fee, so...
Greg, I saw your number crunching, anything over there?
No, just if you take the average of, from two thousand and thirteen, is five hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is about a forty-four percent decrease in what we, what the four oh four, which is what's recommended. That's all, so...
Say again, Greg.
If you take, you know, the big numbers, you know, obviously the one twelve and the, and the one forty-six are, in my opinion, are outliers. They were, I don't know how it was, who knows when it was started? Anyway, point being, from the six twenty-five down to the five thirty-six for the next nine projects, or the nine projects that are either completed since two thousand and thirteen, or will be completed by two thousand and twenty-two, it equates to about, it equates to an average of five hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is about a forty-four percent more than what they're proposing that we charge at the four oh four.
So you're saying that's more realistic?
That should be more of a realistic number rather than a four oh four, than what they calculated them based on. Or it's more an up-to-date number, because as we all know, prices aren't probably going to be going down here in the near future. And with the, with the quadrant study looming over us, we've got to look at, in my opinion, a realistic number. And especially if we're looking at growth, paying for growth, we're going to need that.
Sir, was there more with your presentation? At this point, I wasn't sure.
We could calculate, you know, we could revise the study and calculate that alternative. Give you two sets of road fees. Or, you know, if the council is, thinks that's the way to go, wants to give us direction today, we can just do it, change it and do it that way. I mean, that does seem like a reasonable way to do it. I mean, obviously, the county was not interested in seeing the highest fees we could come up with, by any means, or even, you know, they didn't want to see fees at all, increases at all, but...
And I think it's fair to, if the fee needs to go down, it needs to go down. And for it to be equitable, but, I mean, I just don't want to, especially when we're talking about road impact fee, and no offense to Nicole with the parks, but the road impact fee is something that's a major, a major thing that's happening in Benita Springs. I mean, we've been on council, I've been on for two years, and from day one, our priority's been traffic and transportation. We're looking at multimodal, we're looking at different things, so I think, no pun intended, but I think we need to give, get the biggest bang for our buck on these impact fees. If people are coming in and it's generating more trips, there's a reason for that. If we need that, we need the money. And it's going to pay for that. It's not like we can use these road impact fees to build a new, a new city hall. It's going to be used for multimodal and/or improving the roads, to include drainage to Councilmember Forbes's concern.
Mike?
Well, I was just going to ask Matt if he had a, any feedback on what he thinks the V M C number should be more closely aligned to?
Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director, I would just probably echo what Councilman DeWitt is, has kind of seized on, which is Shankar Law Road was kind of bid, the economy was still a little soft from the construction perspective. So, we actually got some pretty competitive pricing on that project. Since then, obviously, there's been an uptick in construction activity. So the, the more recent the number, probably the more reflective it is as to what's going on in the construction industry.
Real quick, Matt, while you're up there, just a quick question. Do we have a number of what, like the old forty-one?
Old forty-one, Clancy alluded to it, but it was a reconstruction of the roadway, and so it doesn't actually add...
Gotcha.
Additional capacity. So it's, it can't be considered in this.
Council, anything for Matt? Okay. Council, what's your pleasure? What would you like to do here?
Maybe see what the numbers would be with the, basing it on a more recent project, with a slightly higher V M C number.
Do we have any numbers for Logan Boulevard from, where did Mac, where did Mac go now? Are there any, you know, they're going to be building that in the next month or so, are there any numbers for them?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Logan Boulevard?
Logan, yes, we have some numbers for that. It's, I don't know, I'm off the top of my head to this V M C number, is how they would compare.
Well, I, I just recommend that we try some of these other numbers, something more recent, but also to answer Carl's suggestion, to see what they, how these compare to just using the Lee County impact fees that they just did without any discounts.
If I may, you know, I'm not a math major, but using one number to create your average, you know, isn't, isn't typically how you create an average. And so, I, I think kind of what Councilman DeWitt had alluded to with, you know, with incorporating the numbers here would be something that, you know, might help.
That's what I'm suggesting, I don't think we should do Shankar Law, I think we should have some kind of more recent average. And I'd be curious to just know what the number is for Logan Boulevard, because they're going to be building that in the next month or so, right?
Sure, we can certainly provide him those estimates and see how they, they rank in this. But, you know, obviously, the more numbers with these averages, it helps.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, were you going to make a motion, a proposal, something? Or Greg, I'm sorry?
No, no, I'm just saying, that's the idea.
No, I mean, I just make, I just think you should go back and look at it.
Do we make a motion now, or do we have it come back with a more recent number, and also with a comparison to the county? Can we get that, or?
I mean, council, what, if I'm not ahead?
That's a consensus of the...
I'm for what Greg and Mike said.
I, I would say that we could maybe go to M P O and help get some better numbers on road construction, because Logan Boulevard, and I'm a fan of that, but number one, it's not a bid project, and there's all kind of stuff going on, and what the original road was going to be credited for and all that. So I don't think you want to use that as a cost basis. Good idea, but when you know the details, it's not, not there. I think M P O would be able to get us information, I'm sure, if we talked to Don Scott and all that.
Okay. Okay, is that direction enough?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, want to talk about park fees now? We're almost done.
They thought they were done.
We're almost done, yeah, we did, we did update the park fees as well. So what we're proposing to do here in, in the study is, is propose, I mean, right now you have a community park fee and a regional park fee. We're proposing to consolidate those into a single park fee. You guys don't really provide regional parks, at least not much in the way of regional facilities. The only reason the county has a regional park fee is because, basically, those are used by everybody in the county. It's not just the unincorporated, primarily the unincorporated area residents use those. So there's a little bit different way to calculate the regional from the community. But... way to calculate the regional from the community. But you guys don't have that issue. So there's really no reason to have two separate pots of money. You basically spend them on the same thing. So that's the main thing. We updated all the. That's just comparing it. Nonutility, including water and wastewater for a single-family unit. And you're kind of in the middle of the pack of your neighbors. So that wraps it up.
Great. Counsel, any questions?
Just a quick comment. When we go to vote on this, whenever he brings it back, are we going to take them separate, parks versus roads, or is he going to present again? And the only reason I ask that is because the park fees that he put up there on the table is not, not in this, not in this slide. So we didn't get a look?
Let's separate them out. Why don't we just say that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Separate what?
Well, the parks from the roads.
I think they're on page five.
Page five.
Because I have them in mine.
Oh, I was looking at it back on the back where it started to park stuff.
Yeah, no, it's up in the beginning.
I apologize.
But I still think maybe the point is well taken. Uh, you know, rather than vote on it, one lump vote, we separate them out for two different votes.
So basically, I mean, really, well, yeah, you can do, I don't know how you're going to do it exactly. I mean, generally speaking, uh, well, I know the way the county does anyway, you know, and most communities do it, is you adopt the ordinance. I mean, adopting the study, I mean, obviously, the ordinance fees, the fee schedule is based on the study. The ordinance should be based, you know, consistent with the study, but you don't have to formally adopt the study itself.
Wonderful.
But you can.
Yes, sir. Wonderful. Thank you. Yes, Carl. Based upon the conversations with regards to road impact fees, are those same type of themes what we want to also apply to parks in terms to make sure that we're, we're using the most recent park improvement funds, taking a look at the averages of the counties and comparing it to the county? The same thing applied to park as well?
Makes sense to me.
Please.
Great. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item nine, mayor and council member items. Item A is schedule a workshop date to discuss city council objectives and goals for the upcoming year, including a review of council interaction and process for issue review. And this is Councilwoman Karamba, green sheet 18040078. Amy?
Okay, I put this on the thing, we probably would be doing something like this. Anyway, though, we did not have a meeting workshop a year ago to review our objectives. I think we just incorporated the ones we had done the year before. And clearly, life is different now than it was a year ago, so I think we definitely need to review our objectives. So I, this is really kind of two-pronged. But I also would like to spend some time during that council, during that workshop, should the council agree to do that, to discuss how we do our business here on the dais and to incorporate some procedures that might facilitate our getting through our meetings a little more easily and how we would do our dialogue. But I also think it might be interesting, and I base this on the work that was done with Councilman Forbes, where we were trying to work on the performance forms, is that it was really good for two of us to work together on an issue or a project where we could interact, notice the meeting, just work on things and bring it back to the council. And the work was, we didn't have to do so much work in talking because by the time we got it to the council, we went through a couple of passes, everybody understood what we were doing. And I think we could do a similar thing on other projects or issues. So if, for example, Deputy Mayor O'Flynn has an interest or is taking the forefront on these multi-modal paths, and if there's something that needs to be discussed along those lines and somebody else wants to join them, we could notice the meeting and we could, you know, work on it. We, uh, he and I actually did that with the Everglades Water Garden, and I thought it was very useful. And the reason why I think we should consider these kinds of things, and we could talk about all this on the workshop, is that because it's so hard to have an open discussion with each other, I mean, it's impossible. It's not even hard, it's impossible with the sunshine law. So I think as long as we are interested in specific things that are supported by the council, I think that would work. And then I'd like to hear other people's opinions of how we could improve, how we get along and how we do our things. And I, and just as a subset of this, some of the discussion or interaction on the council, every once in a while, it gets to be a little tense, you know? And I think if we understand how we do our process, we can avoid that because I love the collegial atmosphere that we've had pretty much all the time. But now as we got to know each other, we joke that, you know, we sort of pop in. But I think, let's spend a little time reviewing how we do things. So I hope that we would agree to this and we'd set a workshop, and then we could work on all these projects. And I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks about it, too.
Okay, great. Thanks, Amy. Counsel?
That's a great idea.
I think it's a fabulous idea.
Yep.
Okay, so can we just?
I make a motion that we move ahead and schedule.
Second?
Also.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second?
Discussion.
Yeah, further discussion?
No, I think it's good. I think we, I think we tend to do it, I think we do it a lot of the time during the budget time because we talk about future and what we're looking at. But I think this is a good prelude to the budget workshop and the budget talks that we're going to have.
Fred?
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I think we should add to it a very brief but concise on Robert's Rules order on at least four or five points so that we're all familiar with those points because that, too, can expedite or cut down some of the discussion where sometimes we go into circle or figure eight or something like that.
Yep.
You know, maybe we need bells, you know, we want to get a, hey, mayor, I'm down here. He always looks down that way instead of looking down this way.
And then I can, then I can start running the timer on y'all. So if I, if I do that, you'll know your warning and then boom, you're done.
That's mostly on that end.
I like it.
On that side, though. No, but thank you, I appreciate it.
I just wonder if, uh, Amy would like to take a shot at an agenda if counsel were around that.
Yeah, I'll just brainstorm by myself with sort of the topics and we could, can we pass it around or something? And then when we come to the meeting, we'll sort of be prepared. But it's pretty much along the lines I've already expressed. Thank you.
Great. The only issue I see with it is having, you know, more secondary meetings. It's harder for everybody else in the community to kind of pay attention. They all know that we have two council meetings every month, and this is the day that they need to pay attention on. If we start kind of formulating our decisions ahead of time, not actually voting on them, it's kind of doing it a little more in the shade. That's my only worry there, so.
Well, I would hope that the discussions would be more like informational, you know, rather than formulating. Because even, you know, we threw it out a couple of times before we got it to the council. So I think there was, anyone that was monitoring our website could have known what we did. And I, and because I just want to know more things and I, and I want to know what other people are thinking and, and input that they could have. I think it would be helpful. I appreciate what you're saying, and we could try to minimize that. We certainly record all the things, and anybody that really wants to see it could see it. And we're not supposed to make any decisions, and we're not even supposed to propose anything, but just to give back the information, sort of like do our own studies on certain things.
But I kind of relate that to, like, when I meet with a builder ahead of time before in zoning meeting to get more information. Not everybody wants to do that, but I mean, I think it's great because I can ask more questions and get a better feel of it, you know, ahead of time. And that's kind of what you're asking here.
In the sunshine, she's asking.
It's in the sunshine.
Yeah.
We could have a discussion about that last comment, you know, because I'd like to know what you, what questions you ask to, on an ex parte. I mean, this is my problem with the developers. So, but I mean, we could talk about that. It'd be interesting to have a conversation at our workshop about what are the positives and negatives of meeting with applicants, ex parte on one-on-ones before what, what it helps. And again, you know, it's fine if you do it. I don't do it. I was, I didn't want to do it for my own personal reasons, but if you want to do it, it's fine. But I can raise some issues about why I think it'd be a problem. But there's also some positives. So we'll talk about it at the workshop. I'll put it down on there if that's okay. And if anybody has any suggestions, just, can they, can they email? Oh, tell Carl and he can tell me. That's the way we're supposed to do it, right? Okay.
Okay. So there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Great, okay. Thank you, Amy, for that. We're going to move on to item B here. This is discuss quote-unquote "government light and outsourcing, including potential feasibility of outsourcing city legal functions." Peter O'Flynn?
Yeah, we've talked about this before at budget time about government light. Is it becoming in Benita more of a slogan than anything else, kind of thrown around? And we saw it last week with respect to a piece of property. We're government light, so let's get rid of the piece of property. The comparison I make on government light is to take a look at a place like Astero, which, like us, is government light, but they truly are. They function with respect to outsourcing on most all functions. They're a very efficient city, and frankly, that efficiency is yielding them many millions of dollars of money that can be properly put toward the needs that the public has in the village of Astero. We are not in that situation, even though we have a larger tax base. So this, this point about government light is more of a generic thing, and I'm bringing it up with respect to this function because I think it's just topical at this point. And so let me start at the end here, and I'll try to be succinct. I'm not asking for a definitive decision today to outsource the legal service. I'm looking to have a process with this council to understand what the possible benefits are, flush them out, and make a thoughtful decision based on what can be perceived as real facts. So why am I interested in it? Some of what Pat Colley said earlier today relates to where I'm coming from. The vast majority of Florida municipalities outsource their legal services. Let me make one other preliminary concept. If this were to go forward, I've said this twice before, every time I've mentioned it, we'd have to appropriately respect the abilities of our current attorney. So it's got to be done in that context. But some, some towns around here that outsource, Astero, Marco, Naples, Fort Myers Beach, Venice, Sarasota, Bradenton, Punta Gorda, Orlando, Ave Maria, La Belle, Arcadia, Long Bow Key, that's just a sampling. And you can see there are big cities in there, there are small cities, there are medium-sized cities. I had a good chat with Mayor Barnett of Naples the other day, who is, who basically said, Peter, we've had both here, and in my view, it's clear-cut, the benefits with respect to outsourcing. And it relates to part of what Pat Colley was talking about before, and I'll get into them briefly. I don't intend to repeat, I don't finitem what he said in the interest of time. Talked to Howard Levitan, who's really, you know, the architect of Astero's outsourced legal services. And he essentially mirrored what Mayor Barnett said and added structurally, and I'm not, I'm not intending this at individuals, but structurally, the added benefit of structural independence. It's one of the points Pat made today. Just a few notes on cost-effectiveness because I know that some of our staff has been kind of going around, at least telling people who are not on council because they've called me and said, oh, no, we have to have, you shouldn't be outsourcing because it's not cost-efficient. Somebody said he did a study on it years ago. So the fact is that on the basic legal services, the way almost all these systems work is there is a retainer, and that retainer, and it's competitive, that's why it's cheap, all right? On that retainer, the firm attends all meetings of council, LPA, zoning board, and many of them take unlimited phone calls from any member of council, any member of staff. They don't hit the taximeter, all right? That only gets hit if there is a substantial research project to be done. So that's, that's, so that's readily available, legal advice that way. So several municipalities actually have a true-up, but it's a one-way true-up. If it turns out that if they record the time for that and it's less than a retainer, they give that back to the city. There's no true-up the other way to increase it. Institutional knowledge, in my view, when you have a generalist, however good the generalist is, you have limited knowledge as a generalist, whereas, and this is the point that was made by both of the fellows I talked to, that when you have a firm, you have expertise available across the board, and that expertise is readily available, whether it's on stuff like Burt Harris, Roberts Rules, environmental law, issues like contract zoning, transportation law, sunshine law, Roberts Rules, even billboard law, you know? There's always someone in that firm who is quickly up to speed on it and is knowledgeable about it. So you're not, you're not paying to have that learning curve. Also proactive and responsive, it's just a fact that if you have more people available, you're going to have a more immediate response that is in-depth on narrow subject areas, many of, which are myriad in this business. And so that's basically, that's basically it. So my notion is that I'd like to get a consensus or a vote of council that we move forward in the investigation of this, and my proposal, next step, is, and I'd be happy to do it, is just lay out what a possible scope of services is. That does not take rocket science that exists all over the state, what those scope of services is. So that's my kind of primer for the discussion.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Laura?
Um, I think we should look into it. I've actually looked a little bit into it, and I think 84% of cities in Florida use outsourcing. So it has to be feasibly financial for people. Orlando does it, so should look into it.
That 84% is a Florida League of Cities survey.
Wouldn't they say, I guess my question, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Greg.
If Laura's done, if Laura's done.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm pretty good at their body language and voice dictation when it drops off, but I'm learning on yours, so didn't want to cut you off. Thanks, Laura.
No, my question is on that 84%. You know, you could say that about Benita right now because we're outsourcing to Theorac in Spain. We've outsourced to a different one. You know, I think there is a benefit to having legal staff here anytime we want to walk in and talk about it. I think there is benefit to having knowledge of what the area is like versus Theorac, when David Theorac comes down, he doesn't know what's going on here. Just like when Clancy was here. I mean, he, you had to spell out to him, hey, look, the road's split down the middle on, on Benita Beach Road. So I think there is some benefit to that. The other kind of points that you made is, you know, Astero's putting money. Their millage is higher. Their one-year city, I don't know if we-
Millage is actually lower, but that's all right.
Well, according to the internet, they're 84 mils and we're at 81.
No, they're lower.
I'm just, I'm going by what this is.
Whatever, among friends.
Yeah. So.
Fuzzy math, fuzzy numbers, right.
Can't believe Naples Daily News all the time, I guess. Sorry, Ted. I just like, you know, I just think that there is, I mean, I know everyone on the dais right now has either called Audrey or someone on the staff at a whim and said, hey, what's going on with this? I think that when Audrey needs help, she asks for it, or when staff needs help, they ask for it. Do I think we need a whole legal team that can do, like you said, you know, do we need to employ someone that knows Robert Rules? Do we need someone that does sunshine? I think that's where the outsourcing comes. At this point, we needed Theorac in Spain, we brought it out there. The other thing I think that happens when you get into larger firms is you lose that, and maybe a positive, maybe a negative, you lose that autonomy. You may not get Peter- You may not get Peter O'Flynn every time. You may get Peter Flynn one time. You may get Peter Simmons the other time. You may get, you know, Mike Gibson the third time. So with that, they may have to get reacquainted with the question, the issue, and everything. So, so I think there is some disadvantages to being that large. And to one of the ones, the gentleman's here of the big automotive firm, as he said it, he was in charge of the automotive firm and he did a lot of outsourcing. He himself wasn't outsourced. And so I, I just think that if this is done, I think we're doing it right now with outsourcing of what we need it to be. I would not be in favor at all of doing this. I want somebody here every meeting because, you know, at every meeting, we look to Audrey to ask the question.
And that's the way it is.
And that's, no, I'm just saying.
We have to figure that out.
I want that to be, I want with every meeting, we have a legal question. I mean, twenty minutes ago was about, hey, can we use impact fee money to do multimodal?
Right.
That would be something like, we hope Carl would know, but Carl's not a lawyer.
Right.
Just like, I'm not a doctor.
And that's exactly the way Astero does it, just the way Naples does it with the.
And I would like to see what that cost difference is. I'm not saying I'm in favor of, but I just think that, I know on our end, at the fire department end, when you start doing special projects and getting somebody down here, it's in the two to three hundred dollar an hour travel distance.
I can tell you what, and I think this is, we got to process this carefully going forward. All right? But I can, I can just mention a few facts. Astero actually has been reduced on their contract, what they're charged. They, they're charged, I believe it is seventy-two thousand dollars a year to have an attorney attend every meeting of the city council, their zoning, and maybe they have, there's other boards as well. Not sure about that, as well as for that price to be available to any member of council or any member of staff to answer questions.
But that's, but that's.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the discussion. And, and I know because Astero is our neighbor, I know we like to use them as a comparison. But the thing that I get, the only thing that I take a step back in concern, they're a one-year-old city. They don't know what they don't know yet. And like, let's use the impact fees. Instead of having someone research into it, we'll just take the counties. The building, we'll just use the county, you know, things like that. That, that's what worries me a little bit about their infancy.
It's part of why I mentioned all the other cities, but, but thanks. Amy?
Well, if we have like eighty-four percent of the cities in Florida using this kind of mechanism, we certainly have a lot of places to figure out how they do it. But I am, would like to explore the beginning comment that you made in regard to how you would take into consideration the long service of our current attorney and how we could use, incorporate some of the things that she could bring to the table. So I'm not quite sure how, are you going to explore that or do you have an idea there?
No, I don't, I don't want to be presumptuous about that. I want to see if council wants to process this as something to think about.
Well, I definitely think we should figure out a lot more details here, you know, not only the cost, but how we would functionally, functionally do that because, again, I haven't really interacted that much with Audrey other than in the meetings. So, and I don't generally know how municipal attorneys are supposed to interact with the council. So other than what I, what I observed by myself, so I'd like to get more information about that. Because I do, I think this exploration should not be a process by which we are critical of the effort that has been made by our city attorney.
Right.
I don't want that, if I've made myself clear.
Right.
So when we get, when we look at this again, that should be incorporated in the presentation that we have.
Okay. Fred?
Well, let me just say, I haven't presumed to talk to Audrey about this because I'm looking for, I don't jump ahead of council. So I'm looking for a consensus of council, whether to process this thing.
Fred?
The only thing I was going to ask is, when you do this, I think it's important when you come back to also define or how this works with Theorac and, which we're heavily involved with, with all these lawsuits. I think, I mean, I think that's a, I'm not saying it's a problem. It just needs to be explained in your thing. I think it's, I think we should look at if eighty-four percent of that.
Well, if it's not eighty-four, it's a majority. I mean, I don't think we're, I'm not suggesting to do this because eighty-four percent are doing it, but a majority of the cities of Florida are doing it.
And we're talking about a transition anyway. We're not talking about a switch here, right? That's why we have to look at these things.
Mike?
Based on what I've heard tonight, I, I'm happy with what we have now. I couldn't say I'd like to go forward at all. I, I want a lot more information before I say anything. I agree with Greg. I think there's a lot of benefit to having in-house counsel. And, you know, all these little facts and figures, I mean, without having, you know, we didn't get anything ahead of time in our packets to actually do research ourselves. So without way more information, I can't, can't see going forward with it.
Okay. And I would be interested in hearing more information on this. I mean, I think, I look at this from a, what do I want to say, economic sense? If there's a better way to use Audrey's talents, if there's a better way to use the taxpayer dollar and we can save money and get better service, I'm all for it. I think this, I look at this obviously as an initial discussion, an initial, and that's, and I know that's probably how you're looking at it too.
Exactly.
Maybe we're all looking at it a little bit differently, but I think the reality is, at the end of the day, and I'll just say it again, if there is a better way to use taxpayers' dollars, I'm all for it. And I'll just leave it at that.
Well, while we're doing this, should we also at least explore what other departments are outsourced in other cities? I mean, we don't have to just pick on the city attorney here. I'd like to at least have a list of them to see how, how, how this is done in other places who are government light.
Sure. No, I mean, you know, and I've, I've said it before, you know, we're government light until we're not. You know, sometimes we're so top-heavy, we get in our own way. There's nothing government light about that at all. So it's a term that means different things to different people. But if we can be fiscally conservative and get better service, I'm all about it. So thanks for bringing it forward. And I think, I don't know, I guess if you're looking for a consensus, I think we have a consensus.
To get more information.
To get more information.
Yeah, that's the only consensus we have is to, because we can't decide without.
Absolutely.
Fully exploring.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Information gathering phase. Wonderful. Okay, we're going to move on now to item C. Consider assumption of maintenance of streetlights located on Benita Grande South that are currently maintained by the Worthington Master Association. Councilman Forbes, and this is green sheet eighteen oh four oh oh seven four. Fred?
Yeah, basically what happened was back in August of twenty, August the twentieth of two thousand eight, the city took over the maintenance and kind of ownership of Benita Grande South from Benita Beach Road to the southern property line of Worthington. Now, what happened was it, it could have been a mistake because none of us were here then. I mean, no one. I think that was maybe when Bill Longcart was here, but I'm not sure. But.
Were you here then, Bill? Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Anyway, in the transaction, Worthington didn't realize this. They've been ending up paying for the streetlights all this time. And the streetlights are actually on the Burnwood Shopping Center side of the road. It's not even on their side. And it's, it amounts to about fourteen hundred dollars or so a year. And what is being proposed is that the city would assume that cost. I will say I did a little checking. And there's another road that goes off Benita Beach Road, actually goes to the front gate of Hunter's Ridge, but it also has Burnwood. And Burnwood does not pay the cost for those lights, neither does Hunter's Ridge, the city is. So it would seem to me that.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, second?
Second.
Third? Okay. There's been a motion and a second and a third. Further discussion, Amy?
Well, I do have a discussion. I mean, I don't really object to this, but I think when we had another, it wasn't on this particular thing, when we assumed a road, we had a, and I raised a question. I said, what is the policy or the procedure when you assume the road that's a private road? And what, what is the mechanisms by which we decide if you're going to take over the road? Are you going to take over, are you going to pay for the streetlights? Are you going to do all this? I don't think we know this done in a very haphazard way. And I think this is an example of it. So, you know, I think we need to have some kind of regular, regular process by which we understand if people want us to take over or we want to take over a road, what are we going to take over? Just the maintenance of the road? Or are we going to take over the medians? Or we're not taking over the medians? Are we going to do the lights or not do the lights? It, it just is totally inconsistent. And I think when you read the stuff that's presented here, it was clear that, that I think the former council that signed on to this didn't want to take any maintenance other than the road. I mean, so, you know, where did that come from?
From reading it, it sounds like they didn't really address the lights.
Yeah.
Well, they certainly didn't want to take over the median.
Right, and they didn't.
You know, so, and if this is just a light problem, we, we also are going to take over the maintenance of the lights. It's not just paying the, whatever it is, a hundred.
One twenty-two.
One twenty-two a, a, a month. It's really the maintenance of the light that's, I think, more significant than whether we pay the electric bill, you know, so.
I would hope. Carl, is this a one-off thing as far as you know?
Yes, sir, as far as we know.
Yeah.
But do we have any history of when we've taken over roads, what we've taken responsibility for? I know that we, did we turn, I know when we took over Walden Center Road in Pelican Landing, the CDD took over the side maintenance over there. And I think that was part of the discussion there. And, you know, why did we do that, you know? I mean, maybe Audrey has a history there, but I think there's all these other instances. We should be consistent in whatever we do. I mean, I don't really object to this. I just, I object to having, not understanding the policy that we have. And even if we want to pass this, I want to have a report on how we do things so that we don't have to have this question every time somebody wants us to take over a road.
Okay. Agreed.
Audrey?
I'd just say that we do, the city council has adopted a road acceptance policy. Now, city council in the road acceptance policy has the ability to waive certain criteria and has done so in the past to assist, including things like the paving of the road project that was Councilman Longcart's specialty. Sometimes there are roads which have landscaping significant above and beyond anything we would provide in core level of service. And in that case, you try to have another entity take over, such as Worthington in this case. And generally, when you say landscaping, you're also talking hardscaping, which I believe does cover streetlights, but that was not the exact term used in the information collected. So that's why I think there was some confusion. But that's why, again, the CDD. Woods Edge is another road that we entered into an agreement to take over. Likewise, Elementary Way. Generally where there's a road, a community is taking care of it and it transcends way beyond that community.
So I mean, I'll move this project, but I really would like to have that clarified for us so we understand if anybody comes forward again, which I, because we have so many private roads in Benita, it's not going to end here, I don't think.
Well, I think you make a fair point. I mean, and I think there's a related point. I'll give you an example. The district I represent outsourced the front door where the mayor lives. Those constituents just paid a half a million dollars, all right, for a traffic signal in the middle of a state road. So I, I think there's a lot to think about in terms of regularizing what the government pays for, what individual taxpayers pay for.
I mean, we don't even have an estimate for what the streetlight maintenance or whatever it is. I don't even know how many streetlights there are on here, you know?
There's eleven.
It's eleven. I know if that, is that significant?
I think Bill's, Bill's offered to go up and change the, no?
No.
Okay, all right.
You have LED lights or something. I mean, we don't really have any information here, but, you know, I don't think we need to spend an hour talking about this.
Right.
So I, I did move this. If somebody wants a second, fine. And but just to follow up, that I would like some kind of a report on how we do this and we could talk about how we want to do it in the future.
Yeah, and there had been a motion and a second, and you were in for discussion. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Flynn?
Sir, yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Doitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, we're going to move on to item D here. Consider an offer by the supervisor elections to place a charter amendment revising the term limits section on the primary election ballot to be held August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. And this is my item, green sheet eighteen oh four oh oh eight two. So this is one that's been on my mind for a number of years. In theory, people say we have term limits in Benita Springs. Well, in reality, we don't. Because you can sit out two years, three years, whatever the case may be, four years. You can sit out eight years. And then you can come back with a clean slate and run for office again and serve eight more years. And depending on what you're doing, sit out two more years if you, you know, served in one office. So what this, what I'm looking to do here is just get, so in other words, we have a term limit in theory in place, but in reality, it's not term limits at all. So this is a proposal by me. As we know, this would be no charge or very, very minimal charge by Supervisor Doyle to put this on the ballot in August so that seven members up here don't decide term limits in Benita Springs, but fifty thousand people or more can decide term limits in Benita Springs. And if they're in favor, if we're in favor of term limits, great. If we're not, great, so be it. The will of the people has spoken. But rather than posture and play bureaucrat and play politician up here, we can bring it to a vote and see what the people think about it, the voters of Benita Springs. And so that's, that's why I brought this forward. We're not asking for any special anything. Supervisor Doyle, as I said, offered, is offering all cities in Lee County and municipalities the right or the opportunity to bring an item forward. And when I saw him, actually, again, swear, election night, he brought it up again. And I said, okay, well, we're in, you know, we're in a little bit of a time crunch here in that we have to have a first reading and a second reading if it does advance and then submit it to Supervisor Doyle by the end of April. So that's why I'm bringing it up now based on time. And those are my thoughts on the idea. And if we are serious about term limits, real term limits, this is our case. This is our opportunity to do that. So that's why I brought it forward. And counsel, what are your thoughts? Amy?
Well, I'm in favor of term limits. I'm not exactly sure. Would this be, this would be a charter revision. So it would be permanent once if they voted in favor of this. Is that how it would work?
Audrey?
Yes, correct?
Yes, it would be, well, this section has been changed multiple times. It would be whatever the voters want, whatever. But it would strictly be something the voters would decide.
But once they decided, the charter would change and this.
That's right, until they change it again.
Would take, all right, that was my first question. And let me, if I read this correctly, you're suggesting that we have a total of eight years? And it could be like council four years and mayor four years? Or, or two terms of council? Is that something like?
That, that's, that's my thought. I know there's certainly.
That would be effect, that would be the effect of doing this. My only concern is in the mayor thing. So we would, if somebody wanted to be a mayor, they either have to come in with no experience or they would have to be on the council for four years and then run for mayor. So I don't know if, you know, functionally, whether that would be good. You know, we might want to do some moderation on that proposal, but.
Yep.
You know, someone else think about it. That was just my only concern.
No, I appreciate that.
But I don't think we should have sixteen years or, you know, with two years out, I definitely don't think we should have that repeat kind of process. But maybe we're over-killing here. But mainly for the mayor thing, not for the, I think sort of eight years. I'm only going to be on for six years, so it's not going to matter for me. That's more than enough. But I think eight years is fine for the council, but for people.
You just got sworn in, Amy. What do you say?
Already out the, you're going to put out the door already.
I'm telling you.
Are you coming or you're going?
I'm done after six, you know, no, I think six years will, you know, eight, eight years will be fine.
Already put out the door.
But think about, I mean, I want your opinion because you were on for four years, right? And then you ran for mayor. So it worked for you, but it might not work for everybody. So what does anybody else think about?
No, I understand. We'll go around the horn here. Thank you, Amy, for that. Greg?
No, I agree with Amy. I think that, I think that, as you put it all the time, Mayor, you're districtless.
Right.
So I think four year, or two terms in a district and two terms at large for the whole thing, I think that's acceptable. Yet that it does equate to sixteen years. whole thing, I think that's acceptable. Yet that it does equate to 16 years, but, you know, it's not like you're appointed. You're being elected by, especially as the mayor, you're being elected by the entire Benita Springs citizenry.
Right, right.
So that would be my suggestion to make the friendly amendment to do it, you know, four years in any one count. I mean, I'm not saying that, okay, I move from District Two over to District Five and then get another eight years. No, it's council, eight years, mayor, eight years. That's it.
Right.
That would be my suggestion.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Greg. Laura?
Oh, I agree completely with Amy and Greg.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Wonderful. Thank you. Peter?
Ditto.
Ditto. Mike?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Fred? Oh, I'm sorry.
What are we agreeing to?
Your point.
Yeah.
You don't want to set it.
No, no, I said, I said eight years in council and one term is...
I agree with Greg.
You know, you're saying, you're saying a total of 16. I think it should be a total of, what's it, 12?
Well, let me just, I thought there was a consensus, so let me just say I agree with that, Greg, not Amy.
Okay.
You know, this was, there's a whole, it's in the green sheet.
Yeah.
There's a whole history to this, all right? And this eight and eight was actually adopted by the people of Benita Springs seven years ago.
Oh, and what happened?
So, you know, I'd rather just stick with, I'd rather stick with that and just leave it be. But I do agree on the lifetime stuff.
Okay, so just take out the loophole is what you're suggesting?
Or whatever you want to call it.
Fred?
Yeah, I agree with that, but one thing that I think is absolutely critical, and that is if we adopt this or adopt it with some amendment, that as soon as we do that, we got to send us to Thariac to look at too, because if the wording is at all screwed up, even though it gets approved, it isn't worth the papers printed on.
And we have done that, Audrey, correct?
We have shown it to him, but could I show it to an elections lawyer, because I think that would be a little better.
Right, right.
And I want to point out, the base of this document was from an elections lawyer that we used in the past. He's now passed away, but I used, we used him for a different term limit question. So I utilized his, and I also looked at the statute to make sure it's still consistent.
And my, and my understanding is there's a word limit of, I think it's 76 words.
All right. Seventy-six words? Is that right?
So that means...
Seventy-five, would that be enough?
State statute has fif, okay, so the state statute has certain requirements for the ballot. There's certain ways you have to ask the question. I would ask questions differently. This is the way to do it. And it has, for the title, it cannot be more than 15 words. For the actual question, it needs to be no more than 75 words. This is state law. And you also have to have an Exhibit A, which is the actual text amendment. You need to make sure it meets single subject rule. In other words, I can't have five other subjects in here. So once we have the title block and everything's good there, I can do the adjustments, and I'll be asking you, if council's going forward, a few directional questions to make sure I change the question and I change the text, and then I run it by an elections attorney.
There is one other comment, and that is, I'm not so sure that you may not want to consider one slight tweaking of this, whether it's eight or eight and eight, and that is if what happened to Amy, somebody vacates a term because they run for election. I don't think that somebody vacating a term to run for election should be allowed to pick up the two years plus two terms, but I think somebody that happens to run for that two-year term should, that shouldn't be held against them. They should get their two full terms. It doesn't happen that often. I think that's fair, but it's not a deal breaker with me, but I think it's at least worth mentioning.
I think, Fred, one point is, we got to kind of keep it simple. And, you know, I think there's time for that in a charter revision. I think it's staff's commentary. I agree with, there's time for that in a charter revision commission in two years.
If you complicate things on the ballot...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're limited on words anyway.
Right, and we're limited on words, so. All right, Kate, can I, further discussion on this, council? Or, yes, Audrey?
Before you vote on it, because I want to make sure I modify the ordinance correctly, because the first reading will happen after we go through initially, as I'm hearing council, and Mayor Simmons, you did a great job in dividing it into two separate and distinct questions. So you have two questions here. One was the term that Deputy Mayor O'Flynn stated, which is the two-year loophole, to remove that section, but have it so that you can have up to 16 years in office, two years as city council, two years as mayor. It's retroactive. Again, there's that case that came out that did say you can apply it retroactively, so other...
You can.
You can. I was surprised when I saw that on, you know. And we did check, all the law that was provided here is good law.
Well, Audrey, the eight and eight, you're just leaving. That's what's in the charter now.
Correct.
So you're just dealing with the first one.
I just need to make sure I'm answering, writing the question correctly on page two of the ordinance. So as I understand it, if we change it to two full-year terms on city council and no more than two full-year terms as mayor, applicable to all current and prior elected mayor and council, I think we have the limitation, take, remove the two-year loophole question. And I also, when I modified that sentence, I took, probably took out too much. It's not a haircut, so I can put it back in, as far as the part where it says however, I take out the word however and start the sentence, resignation from office shall constitute a full term. So you can't have somebody do two years and then leave and then come back and say, well, that never counted.
So council, by a...
If it was a resign to run.
Yeah, by a nodding of the heads for now, let's break it, the loophole, are we in favor of getting rid of the loophole, the sit-out provision?
Yes.
Okay, very good, okay. I thought so. So there you go, Audrey, for that. Do we need a formal vote on that? Do you want to break it out as a formal vote, or how do you want to do it?
As long as I understand, I'm a happy camper, so.
What's that?
As long as I understand, and I believe the consensus here was very clear.
Okay.
Everybody's okay with that.
And then what we're doing, so, and that's all we have to do then? We don't have to address anything else?
If you are okay with two, two full-year terms as council and also two full-year ter, two full four-year terms as mayor.
Right.
Okay, I'll make the modifications accordingly.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll make a, I'll make the mo, well, I've made the mo, I've brought it forward, so I'll make the motion to get rid of the loophole and to stick currently as written with two full terms on city council and two full terms as mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for discussion.
Okay, and for discussion.
Only that, we're just taking the two years out, the rest, we're leaving it as is.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
So the best way to word that, okay, great. Okay, so whatever Audrey said, I make that motion, and there's been a second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Aye.
Counsel, thank you. Thank you very much. Yep.
At this time, if we could begin...
Yes, Audrey, please, absolutely. Let's get into the legalese. Let's roll.
Thank you. For council's consideration, attaches an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida calling for and ordering a binding referendum to be held in the City of Benita Springs on August 28th, 2018, to determine whether majority of the electors are in favor of a charter amendment relating to term limits, establishing the date of the election for the charter amendment to be held on August 28th, 2018, requesting that the Lee County Supervisor Elections conduct the election in accordance with the laws and regulations, providing ballot language, directing that the notice of election be prepared and given, providing for severability, scrivener's errors, and ineffective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. For Councilmember Carr, I want to point out that under Florida law, you can either read the title block in the record or read the entire ordinance. We opt to usually read the title block. Makes it much easier for everybody. The second reading and public hearing of this ordinance will be at 9:00 AM in city chambers on April 18th, 2018.
Great, thank you.
I need it.
Yes, absolutely. So there's been a motion and a second. It's been read into the title block. No further discussion?
If you're going to move to public hearing on April 18th, and I will also work with the supervisor of elections to make sure we get the ballot perfected, as well as I'm going to be retaining additional assistance.
An election law attorney to review the language. Wonderful.
Yes.
Yes. So public hearing on this issue? Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Okay? Yes, ma'am? On this only, right now, ma'am. There will be opportunity later. Okay? Roll call, please.
Audrey, I'm sorry, did you have a motion and a second?
The motion would be to...
You need a new one, don't you?
We, we had, yes, we did the first motion, which was giving me direction of what to draft.
Right.
The second motion, which I'm requesting now, is to move the ordinance to a second reading.
I'll make that motion.
All right, second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second for the first reading, second reading, excuse me. Second reading. Further discussion? Anybody from the public wish to speak? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Audrey, anything else on this?
May I ask Audrey a question?
Yes.
I thought on first readings, we don't have public hearing.
You don't, because we don't have the ordinance advertised. I don't see a harm in requesting it.
Okay, I just, but...
Normally, you do not. Now, there are some exceptions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Now we're moving on to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak on any item, please come forward.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
My name is Beth Ann Algie, and I'm going to go with a script, because I tend to go off on tangents. Welcome to our new members in the council and the returning members too, and thank you for your service here. We've had some discussion today. The vows were very interesting for me to hear again, and we had a lot of discussion about mobility, and that's what I want to talk about. I'm a nurse. I care for the many wonderful neighbors of yours that you do not see out on the streets and out at places. It's too difficult for them to go. Each one in this room is a quick accident on Benita Beach Road, a moving blood clot, or an illness away from being disabled yourselves. These wonderful community members, perhaps in their last months on this earth with ALS, just want to make some family memories or go to a favorite place that they enjoy one very last time. Our disabled community members include nurses, doctors, accountants, chefs, business owners, teachers, and firefighters, and they got sick once, and now we're being, we're disrespecting them. They rarely go out. They tell me through their depression, well, it's just too difficult. By the time they have somebody dress them and wash them and then try to get out to a place, it is just too difficult. The lack of enforcement of federal accessibility laws is supporting violation of the civil rights of these neighbors of ours. You see, in Benita Springs, there is poor accessibility throughout the city boundaries, and the scope of that is widespread. Here is the process. There are federal regs, the ADA laws, and enforcement is done by the municipal communities. That's not happening here. If the local municipalities do not enforce, and there is the DOJ, which does not have the resources to enforce all over the US, or there are lawsuits. So the lack of enforcement by the city causes lack of access for our community members, and it causes for our businesses exposures to lawsuits. And the local jurisdiction is legally obligated by federal and state law to enforce ADA laws and to support our disabled neighbors and to protect our business owners. And when I ask the city for documentation or evidence of any observation activities, inspection, warnings, citations, internal enforcement of repeatedly violated permit rules that would trigger inspections, I see nothing. And I've even offered to arrange for education for business owners on how they can and should support the ADA laws. And as a nurse, I could see the ADA violations, which are causing the sadness for our community members, and I could see it in widespread scope across the city. The state laws are 553.513 and 553.80. The city is supposed to be performing these duties, and they're not. Currently, I'm ashamed. I wish you all safety and health so that you will never have to experience firsthand the difficulties that I'm speaking of. And I would want every, this, this city to step up on the enforcement and the permitting processes in order that the ADA rules are more enforced across this city and make it easier for our community members. There are about 50 in our community, about 50 ALS patients, about over 2,000, almost 2,500 multiple sclerosis patients. There's SMA, MDCP, strokes, Parkinson's, there's all these things, and we are making life very difficult for them, and I think we could do better. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, ma'am. Hi, Kathy.
How can I follow something like that? For the record, Kathy McGrath, well, you've had a lot of serious discussion before, and I know you're going to have more after, and it's up to me to lighten the atmosphere a little bit. I would like to recognize and say thank you to David and Sarah Zimmerman, Royal Scoop. Last Saturday, they had their 24th annual Easter egg event. I just can't imagine the amount of money that these people have laid out in 24 years to keep so many people happy. It was just fun. And, you know, they had a lot of little activities. What I did want to point out is, for the last two years, they have a special egg gathering thing for the visually impaired, working with Lighthouse of Collier, which is kind of nice. It gives those kids a chance. I think they have the beeping eggs that they go around. So it was, it was a beautiful, beautiful day. And of course, look what's coming up. Surprise, surprise. Celebrate Benita on Saturday. You know, our days are long, the sun's up late. From four to nine, free entertainment. We've got Sarah Hattica and High Voltage, both crowd pleasers. There'll be vendors there selling food. There'll be other vendors there, and of course, all the, all the beverage, all the beverage proceeds benefit the assistance office. So please come on out, have a great time and enjoy yourself, because it's going to be a beautiful, beautiful evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, and I just would want to recognize Councilman Bill Longcart for being here. Thank you for being here tonight, Councilman. Okay, other members of the public? Seeing none. Okay, we are going to move on to the city attorney's report. Audrey?
Thank you. I have two things of city business. The first is just to remind council that annually, you receive a copy of the code of conduct. You should have received a binder. Councilmember DeWitt, Councilmember Gibson did hand-deliver a copy of the receipt of it. If anybody doesn't have it, let me know, and I can provide you with the documentation. We do need that signed and provided back to the clerk. So if you would do that. No voting is necessary on that item. The second item, and this is consistent, again, with the city charter and the code of conduct, is to elect a deputy mayor. Everybody is eligible with exception of Councilmember Simmons. In accordance with the code of conduct, it does say, maybe this should be changed, to always have it right when you have the new election. And that's council's pleasure, if you wish for me to change code of conduct on that type of information. If you would conduct the election, that would be great.
Okay, yes. No, I would like to nominate Peter O'Flynn for deputy mayor. Amy?
Second.
Okay. Is there, I forget how this is done exactly.
You wish for any other nominations?
Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. I've made the motion. There's been a second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations, Deputy Mayor O'Flynn.
You know, do you like to say something?
Well, no, I just, yeah, I'll just grab my other remarks and say it's an honor and a privilege to be elected by this council to serve. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. Counsel, any other comments?
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Well deserved.
I was going to say, get to work.
Now, congratulations.
Great, thank you. Okay, city managers' report. Carl? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Items A and B are reports that we submit to you periodically. You've got your capital project status report, financial report. We stand ready for any questions you might have. Seeing none, I'm moving on to item C. On July 4th, we have a scheduled council meeting, but it is also a holiday, and we are asking council's direction on how you'd like to handle that. Option would be probably not to hold the meeting, because you've got a function that day to go to, right? But you could hold the meeting, cancel the meeting, reschedule the meeting. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I would say it's a holiday. I'd say we just cancel or reschedule for a later date, but I mean, we could probably do the rescheduling in June to see what's on the forefront.
Okay. Mike?
I agree. We could probably skip it, but if there's anything pressing, we may want to just reschedule. reschedule it for a different day.
So, cancel it for now and readjust if needed. Does that... That may not be eloquent, but I guess it portrays the idea.
You gotta drop back and punt, we'll punt at that time.
Right, 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 okay.
We will check back with you in June, okay, on that. Then, I've got an errata that I've submitted to council. This regards the Dixie Moon. Council has expressed an interest in receiving additional information like this earlier on. We have been working, as you know, for some length of time on attempting to move the Dixie Moon. It is tied to the developer moving forward. The developer had a significant amount of time trying to get their financing in place. It is now in place, they're fully funded, and they plan to begin their development. And this is Mosaic, Mosaic at Dean in Old 41. They plan to get their project underway mid-May. They are looking for us to move the Dixie Moon within that period of time. They will stroke a check according to an agreement of $140,000. We got into the building along with the owner as well as the moving company and have determined that there is significant termite damage to the point where you need to shore up the floor as well as the walls in order for the mover to have a prayer of getting the thing moved down the street, seven blocks. Matt actually, Matt, you're here. Matt's actually been in the building. He's seen it. He described it to me like this. Right now, the building, if they were trying to move it, would be moving like this. All right, so that would not be a stable situation. The $140,000 was originally budgeted for the move of the building, for placing it on a slab, roughing in, plumbing, and also adding a couple of restrooms, if that was appropriate. Right now, it is now shifted where it's gonna cost $147,000 to shore up the building, move it, and put it on a slab. So, no rough-in, no bathrooms. In fact, if you take a look at the significant list of things that are not covered on this move, the city will be looking at additional monies in order to move this and make it close to being functional. The other thing is, we're double-checking this, but at this point in time, this move is proposing that this building be five feet above current grade. We're gonna double-check to see if that can be waived because this building is historic. However, if that is the case, you're gonna be looking at a stem wall construction, five feet in the air, and then you're gonna be looking at ADA accessibility in the future. And then perhaps, if you, if you try to put fill-up against the stem wall to provide for sloping, you might have drainage issues to neighbors to their north. So, there's a whole lot of things involved here. We do not have all the answers, but we wanted to bring this to you early on, as soon as we knew, soon as we got the last quote from the movers as to what the numbers could be.
Is there any bad news?
Well, the good news would be a lot shorter. Yeah, I understand. Great question.
Now, and look, you know, be it from fiscally conservative me, but there's just, I mean... There's a price here, right? There's a price tag here, but there's also a historical value to this building, so... What's our timeframe here? Because it seems like the longer it sits there, the more expensive it gets.
Mid-May.
Mid-May, okay.
Which, there's a lot of work to do between now and then if we get the green light on this.
Right, right. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of greenlighting this. If it was just any old shed, any old building, any old anything, I would think about it differently. I think it is pretty well-known, or at least to my knowledge, that at one point this was the last chance that you could get gasoline between here and Miami. You couldn't even get gas, once upon a time in Naples, apparently. You would stop there, you'd get gas. There's historical significance in this. How do I say this? Down south here, there seems to be fewer and fewer historical buildings than there are up north where I came from. This is a piece of our history, and I would be in favor of spending what we need to spend, as little as possible, but spending what we need to spend to make this happen. Counsel, what are your thoughts? Amy?
Well, we know about the necessity to have a height.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Elevation or something?
Yes, I mean, that's something we should be able to get by the end of the week. Oh, no, I think they'll be able to get that.
And then my second question is, is there any possibility that we could get like tourist development funds to assist us there? Or can we apply for some help here? To make it functional?
I'm not sure if this would qualify as something the TDC would, would fund. I'm looking at Mike who just came off of TDC.
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's more beach and shoreline stuff.
Excuse me?
They do more beach and shoreline stuff, not so much. They'd help with advertising for events, things like that, to bring people in the community that would stay in hotel rooms, but...
They help for attractions, too?
Yeah, for advertising to bring people into the area.
Not, not bricks and mortar. Well, I would like to have some planning about how we could... Because it's not just what we have here. It's, as you say, there's a lot of expenses gonna go in here to make it functional for what we thought we wanted to do, and you know, that preliminary design that our architect gave to us was fabulous, you know? And frankly, that's where I want to go. I don't want to have a halfway project here that is not gonna be a jewel because of where we're locating it. So, I think staff should, once we get it settled, work on developing some kind of process by which we can get those funds that is gonna be needed to really develop it the way it should. That's where I have my concern, that we, you know, because it's gonna be like two or $300,000 by the time you put in the, you know, the facilities and things, unless I'm wrong.
Mike, I didn't see your hand, I apologize. Mike?
Yeah, it's something I think we definitely need more numbers on, you know, what it would actually cost the city to put in. The $140,000 that we're getting was an incentive for Mosaic to do other things. So, we're still allowing them to do other stuff, so we're still gonna get that money. We may want to talk with the Historical Society. They may deem that that 140 might be spent better on something else besides doing this. So, I think we need to bring them into this discussion and see what their feelings are on it too. Because if it does have to be raised up five foot, it's really not gonna go with the character of Old 41 anymore because it's now raised up. I don't think you can really do the flood-proofing on an old building like that. It would cost a lot of money if you could. And then even moving it, that, we're not moving the entire building as you see it, we're only moving that front section. So, there is no rear wall. So, this would actually only put plywood up on the back, so... The city would be spending a lot of money, in my opinion, but I think we need to get those hard numbers to see what's going on and bring in the Historical Society, like I said.
Are you saying, Mike, only the facade would be moved? Is that the...
Yeah, it's only, it's a very small building. What you see there now is the original building plus what they added on. They're not moving the addition, they're only moving that front part.
Which is about 500 square feet and change.
Yeah, which has no back wall.
What's, what's the depth of what you're talking about? Can we just move the facade? You know, can we put it in a box and just build?
We practically are.
And, and build, you know, a new building? And put the facade on?
We've not looked at that.
Teddy Roosevelt's birthplace is a new building.
Well, that's...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I just said Teddy Roosevelt's birthplace, which is a national historic site, is not his birthplace. It's a new building that was built to look like the old one. I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just throwing that in for, you know.
Laura?
I would like to see more numbers on how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Great. Is that direction, and, oh, go ahead, Greg.
I just had a quick comment, and I, kinda along the same lines as Mike's got. I think we're gonna, I think the 140 is supposed to come to the city, not to the Historical Society, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, I guess my thought is, and I apologize, I'll apologize now to Dallas and to Charlie and everybody on the Historical Society. We, in the, in the budget, we have money that we've allocated for this Historical Society. Maybe they can come back and help us out and say, instead of putting it on something on, that they're looking at, let's put the money that we've put aside to give to the Historical Society, give it to this. Because this is a, an historical building, instead of one of their projects, put it back to this project. Because at the time, when we did the budget, we thought the 140 was gonna take it, and they were supposed to use, I think it's 40 or 80,000 dollars.
You're talking the Historic Preservation Board?
Yes, Historic Preservation.
Because there's two separate entities.
To clarify, there's two, you have the city-appointed Historic Preservation Board, which has the funding for the grant program that you've approved, plus there was an additional 25,000 approved for a potential historic village, which they were...
So, that's what I mean, can we use that money, go to them and ask them, hey, in order to make this thing work and put it in that area, can we use that money? Because right now, it's line item for them to do that.
Great. Well, the council has total control over that money, so...
I know, but right now, they're counting on it. I don't want to
Understood.
yank the rug out from underneath them, but...
And just, they're a separate entity from the Benita Springs Historical Society.
But if this supposed, if, if this is going to be a city project, I think we need to get a variety of ways to, to fund this. I mean, even if, when we have some of our events, we, you know, we support Benita Assistance, which is certainly a laudable charity, but maybe we have to run it to preserve the history, you know, for these buildings. Because I really think the number is gonna be like
Big.
300,000 and up.
It, it could be there.
You know, and...
And of course, right now, we're just worried because we are five or six weeks away from the developer wanting to move, that we're gonna have to get the building moved first and then figure out that probably post-move.
But I have a concern about it being elevated and how that's gonna affect where we're trying to put that. What is that gonna look like next to, what is next to it? Is it your, whose building? Your building is next to it?
The laundromat, sorry.
The laundromat, yeah.
At ground level.
At ground level.
Okay, counsel, anything else? So, the direction is bringing more numbers back. More numbers.
Get more information quickly.
Okay. That's all I have.
Do we have time for that, Carl? I mean, if they're talking mid-May, I mean, how much time does Flint Doyle need?
Well, that's another thing that I don't want to hit the city attorney with cold, but Flint and Doyle is the only company we've been dealing with on this issue, okay? That's where the original quote came from, that's who we've been dealing with. That's who we've brought onto site to look at situations, okay? So, given the fact that this could be a $140,000 move, what about an exception to the procurement? Because we've not bid this project, in terms of the move of the project.
I think if, if council feels that it is time urgent, that having a bid would possibly cause the building not to be there, I believe you have a perfect right to say waive the bid procedures. Or alternatively, if there is other entities, you could get soft quotes and come back.
But the only bid would be on the, not the move, because Mosaic's giving us the 140, so that's a pass-through. Could you consider it a pass-through? And the only thing that's really be coming out of the budget would be the 3225 to make the additional shoring up to get it there.
Well, I, we receive revenues from a lot of different places. It's how we spend it. I think that has to be looked at, and so if that money comes to us...
Could we have the
We could have a procurement issue. We could probably make that arrangement. We could probably make that arrangement.
And...
Do you want to talk about this afterwards, or...
Yes, I'm not prepared at this moment. But I did want to point out that some of the line items in the structural, you know, as far as demolition of the remaining, if you're now breaking it up into a facade issue and then demolition of the other portion of the structure, you may have a different way of coming up with that number for what the city actually needs for the move.
We did that with the fire, with the fire district on the, we didn't put the demolition of Station 3 included into the building of it, so we did, we bid that out ourselves.
Right, and you could do that where that other portion, you could take that out of there. That's probably less time urgent. It might be time urgent with the developer, but I don't know if that's a city obligation. I'd have to look into that agreement.
Okay, well, in order to move the building, we need to demolish the add-ons to the building. And we need to shore up the building
Okay, why would that...
before it gets moved.
I guess, why would, I can understand shoring up the facade if we're maintaining the 500 square feet.
Right.
I'm not sure I understand why it would be on the city's nickel for the demolition of the remainder portion of the building.
Well, that would be part of the 140. But we can talk to the developer about that, okay? Thanks, I appreciate that. Yeah, Matt, I apologize. Do you have anything else, Matt, on this?
No, just, there's termites, and the floor's rotten.
It's Florida.
The, the house mover, or, they're a fairly specialized contractor for this region. And they, they are experts in what they do. And they did say that they probably, you know, depending on whatever action we take, could put a carpenter in there, which is the first work they recommend. I think within, within the month, and then would be in a position, probably within a month's time, to be able to move the building. So, you know, whenever action is given, it sounds like the first thing they would, could do would release someone within about a three-week period of time. And then a month following that, they'd be in a position to move it.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, and Arlene has an announcement.
Just a reminder that DPZ will be here next week, starting Monday, April 9th through the 12th. We will be having evening, hosting evening workshops and office hours every evening, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. If city council members would like to schedule individual meeting with the consultants, we're happy to arrange that as well. You're also welcome to attend any of the public workshops in those evenings. We have done a mail-out to large property owners of Long Benita Beach Road. Information has been spent, sent also to our representatives at Lee County and Collier County for their participation as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Arlene. Mike?
What, what time on, for DPZ on those days?
Five, 5:30 to 7:00.
On all the days, or?
We have a flyer which I've got, that's on the website and in the mail-out, so I can confirm each of those individual evenings.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Now, we're moving on to mayor and council member reports. Item A, hold the discussion on evaluations and then provide requested guidance to Deputy Mayor O'Flynn and potential contract terms and conditions for city manager and city attorney. And this is Councilwoman Amy Caramba, green sheet 18040077. Amy?
I put this in because we seem to have trouble following the process that I thought we had discussed. And this is pretty straightforward, and I want to first of all thank all the council persons for putting in their performances. I found them very useful, and I also give a thank you to Councilman Schlatka, who did his before he retired. And I just, and these were the, the four steps that I thought would be necessary, so, you know, if somebody wants to jump in and say, I like those four steps, or I don't like those four steps, but I think we can handle this, and my suggestion would be is that we take, if we want to make a decision tonight, which I thought might be helpful, we should take the personnel individually, and I would start with the city manager. So, what's, what's your thought on, on the suggestions for the steps of the process?
Peter, do you have?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Oh, in terms of Amy's
Right.
suggestion, I'm sorry, Amy. Well, the only, you wanted to start with the city manager. I had a question about the city attorney. If we are thinking about, and the consensus is to think about, this outsourcing concept, I would think it'd be logical to hold that. Now, it may be appropriate to extend that for a period of time, because whenever it expires, it's only in a month or so.
Well, I agree. Well, I thought we would talk about it, but we, that's why I chose the city manager first, because I thought we'd have a different discussion.
Okay.
I really would...
You're asking about your process, I think it's fine.
You know, I mean, it doesn't matter, we could take that one first, but I think we should just... Does the council agree that we should have some kind of general discussion about the performance evaluations? And, and then, out of that, have a motion from somebody about whether we should extend the contracts? And then go on to three and four. Is that okay, do that process?
Well, I think it makes sense to start, if you want, Amy, if you want to go over your evaluations, I think that's fine.
Well, I mean, I'd be happy to go over mine. I was just gonna, I did read them over again today, and my, the city managers, I thought that it was relatively positive, but, but it was different depending on which person wrote it. And I'll just, I am in favor of offering a contract to the city manager. And if anyone reads my written material, I have some suggestions where I would like to see some improvements. But in general, I think he's made a lot of progress, and he's responded to some of the concerns that I had a year ago when we did do, when we did the performance evaluations, we offered the year contract. If you want me to talk about specifics, I think his finest hour was, and time was how he dealt with the, with the Irma crisis, which was an extraordinary event for any city. There were things that, you know, could have been improved upon, and I have the same concerns that had been raised about the debris removal costs, but... and I have the same concerns that had been raised about the debris removal costs, but these are things that happened, so, and, and I think that he has worked very hard to improve in areas that I wanted to see improvement with communications and outreach to the various external governmental agencies, and that's why I think we should offer the contract to him. If you want me to go over anything more specific, I will, but I think reading everybody else's, it was some, some good things, some bad things, and there were some really positive things, and some things that he could work on, and, and I believe that the process that we're doing here is to give guidance to what our expectation is collectively as a council. So when you, when one reads my performance evaluation, and the things that I'm sensitive to, maybe other people aren't, you know, but if we have a collective idea that there are certain things that we all want improvement, then we would expect him to do that in the future. So, I thought it was constructive, but I don't know if anybody else agrees.
Great, I think I'll just go around the horn here. Greg?
No, I'm very happy, you've read my evaluation of Carl, I'm very happy with his performance. I have no problem extending the contract. Personally, I'd like to see a longer-term contract, a three-year, personally. That way, we don't run into, I mean, we wait, let me rephrase that, we've used a lot of council's time over the past two months, month and a half, discussing this, and we're still discussing it, where if we had a longer term, we'd deal with this every two to three years instead of every, every year, you know. In the ones I've negotiated, it's been two to three years, and then with one opener, we can negotiate wages every, every year thereafter, and then it's, it's not as painstaking, I guess you would call it. We don't get into our, our arguments up here, our debates of what, what it should be and what it shouldn't be. I mean, maybe the evaluation is tied to, you know, pay versus, you know, terms of agreement. I mean, in the contract itself, we have the out that if we're not happy, we can terminate for cause or without cause. So, so we still have that, where our hands aren't tied, is what I'm trying to say, is if we do a three-year contract, our hands aren't tied, if next year comes around, and as a collegial body, we're not happy with him, then we'll, we'll terminate his employment. But as a whole, I think that Carl did good. I agree with Amy about the hurricane. He came through, he, he was there with us at ground zero, I guess you would say, where it came, where it came aground here in Benita Springs. And like I said, my, my evaluation says it all. You know, some of us have different expectations of whether it's communications or what it is. I mean, my, my expectations may be, may be different than everybody else's, but I think he does a fine job going around, when we did the MPO stuff, and I put that in my report, when I was going around, and was tasked by this board to help out with the MPO, the two or three places I went, that where Carl went, he helped me set it up, and he was very knowledgeable about it, and very well-received in the places that we went together. So, I think he does a job very well, in and out of the city of Benita Springs.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Laura?
Well, I've had very little actual interaction with Carl, and he's a wonderful person and a great man. And while I've been observing meetings for over two years, I kind of felt that the council didn't give real direction, and after the hurricane, there was the focus, and, again, I echo, Carl did a phenomenal job during the hurricane. But then, there was real direction given, and everything that the council directed, Carl performed. So, I think maybe there's a communication between council and city management that would be helpful if we did a little bit more of, but, you know, again, day one.
Right.
Good job.
Right, right. I, I guess my turn, I'll go now here down the line. I mean, obviously, we looked at, I looked at all the city managers' performance evaluations from us, some good, some bad, and I do have expectations, and many of those Carl meets, but many of those he doesn't meet. And I guess, if I'm on an island, that's okay, I've been there before. But when he called me last summer, letting me know that he was going, in fact, I'll just read it, what I wrote on my report, these are public, so anybody can see them. "Last summer, the city manager called me indicating that he was looking for and applying for a new job. While he was, while this was not an easy decision for him, he made it. He did not receive the job. It is hard to decide if the city manager should be rewarded when he is actively and openly looking for another job. The other eight areas are clearly outlined, meets expectations, and/or needs improvement." There's another section here, "counsel for improvement or enhancement of duties," "miscommunication and/or lack of information for debris removal for several millions of dollars," "miscommunication and/or lack of matching funds for legislative priorities in Tallahassee," and for those of you that weren't in Tallahassee going back and forth, you may not understand that. "Applied for another job that he did not get makes one wonder if he is happy and/or wants to maintain his current role." And the terms of the miscommunication, it wasn't a simple miscommunication, it was, I remember, and everybody probably has a different memory, that one time, we were at about five million dollars for debris removal, then all of a sudden, the next meeting, the meeting after that, we were at twelve million dollars, or eleven million, approaching twelve. That's, that's a six million dollar miscommunication, or lack of communication. I mean, I can pull out the files, I've got everything in front of me, there are questions, when you don't get a communication on a nine-hundred, I know it's in here somewhere, nine-hundred thousand dollar payment for debris removal, three forty, three hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, all in the same day, all on the same day. Five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, all I'm saying is, Carl has an account where if it's under fifty thousand dollars, he doesn't have to report anything to us, and I get that, that's his discretionary account. But with sums like this, I, like I said, if I'm on an island, I was hopeful for better communication, when we're laying out millions and millions and millions of dollars. It's an emotional issue, it was storm removal, it was debris removal, and it was a hurricane, and everybody was upset, and people were doing a lot of different things, but, kind of back in the vein of a fifty thousand dollar discretionary fund, I get that, but not millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars that we weren't communicated about. So, you know, that's my thought on that. And when we're going back, and Greg and Fred, and certainly, Greg, I don't remember if you were in the meeting, I don't think you were at this one, anyway, we were at a meeting with State Representative Ray Rodriguez, and he was very, very blunt with us, when we went up there before Christmas. He said, "Okay, you're, I see what your priorities are, they look good, but what I don't see here is a match. I don't see any match in place." So, basically, that was kind of our report, coming back with our lobbyist and with Carl, that we need a match, these, these are in place, but we need a match in place. Okay, so that was communicated, you know, one way or another, through our lobbyist, with our lobbyist, with Carl, and there was never a match put in place before Christmas. We were told, okay, well, this twelve million dollars that we've spent is our match. Well, I did some digging around, and I asked some people, this, that isn't, that doesn't qualify as a match. We may think that's a match for us, emotion, it's a lot of money, I get that, but it doesn't fit into any of our categories or any of our priorities for our sheets here that we turned in for Tallahassee, which I also have in front of me. So, when you look at what we turned in for our legislative priorities, you know, the initial round, you know, whatever it was, it didn't matter. Benita Springs came with a zero percent match. We were requesting a hundred thousand dollars. What's the federal match? Zero. What's the state match? Zero. What's the local match? Zero. Any other matches? No, it was a zero. So, when, when it was very clear that the first round of cuts came out, so to speak, and we were left out, of course, we were asking, why were we left out in this first round of cuts? Well, you didn't have your match in place. Yes, but we put up twelve million dollars for the hurricane. Yes, but that doesn't qualify, and that wasn't listed on any of these sheets. So, somewhere along the way there, there was a miscommunication. So, for this money that really wasn't highly accounted for, all of a sudden, it was our saving grace as our match, but it wasn't, it didn't fit into the sheets and was not put on the sheets, because it did not qualify to be on the sheets. And then I'll just say, you know, he applied for another job, so, you know, I'm, I'm a staggered term here, I've given the example again. I'm your mayor, and I'm thrilled and honored to be your mayor, but if I'm out campaigning in between meetings here, running for the state senate, or running for state rep, or running for congress, and I'm open and honest about it, I mean, I think that's a process everybody's gonna know about anyway, and I don't get that position, how's that make you guys look at me? I don't know. So, those are my thoughts. Peter?
Well, anyone who reads my review from last year, including Carl, who I sat down with, knows what my view was last year. It was not a stellar review, and I don't really like to talk about that too much publicly. Having said that, this year, I put a review in that showed improvement, and two specific things were on my mind. One was the thing that Greg mentioned, which had to do with the MPO, and the other one has to do with some hurricane stuff, because at its core, well, I had a few concerns that I thought were significant. One was that, in my view, honing in and owning stuff, and being totally immersed and on top of things, was an issue. And with respect to the other item, that I won't want to get into the detail of, I, I told Carl, when I met with him, I thought he was on top of that. So, to me, it wasn't black and white, I saw improvement, and I told Carl that I'd be inclined, coming into this meeting, waiting to see what other people had to say, to support something going forward. Now, I must say that we've got one person here who was elected citywide, that's the mayor of the city of Benita Springs, and, I mean, I'm hearing the mayor say, not as a personal matter, but as a business matter, I'm hearing you say you have a concern, a concern about confidence in the city manager. And I, I guess my view is, I need, I would want to digest that and personally talk to the city manager about that. It gives me a lot of concern, I'm gonna see what other people say, but that's where I am on it. It, it is concerning to me, because it's the mayor, who is elected citywide, who is the face of the city. So, that's, that's where I am. I, I would, my personal druthers would now be to understand this better, I can watch the tape, and have a chat with Carl about it. That's where I am.
Thanks, Peter. Mike?
Well, my evaluation's out there, I assume you all read it, so I really don't have much to say about that. And I'm in favor of extending a contract. The only thing, question I did have for Audrey, was, is it the charter that speaks about the city manager, how it's actually an indefinite term and has to be removed, versus having contract that does end?
That's correct. So, Section thirty-three and Section thirty-four of the charter need to be written, read together, and the city council is supposed to appoint the city manager for an indefinite term, and that's the language in there, and then, and that's what's done by contract afterwards, fix the manager's compensation, and approve the reimbursement of city-related expenses. There's some additional things in Section thirty-three. If city council decides not to continue with the manager, and it's an indefinite term, they could go forward and do a removal process, and that's separate and distinct, but they have, you have the possibility of doing that. It's not just run the clock on the city manager.
So the contract's more just salary and things like that, not, not so much terms?
Under the charter, it says indefinite term. So there is, if the city manager did not get a renewal, there is a removal process for the city manager.
Okay, Mike, you done, Mike? Okay, Fred?
Well, I guess, I got immediate reaction on that, these latter points should have been discussed last year. Because we're just hearing about this today.
Hearing about what?
Contract.
What points?
The contract, according to the charter, should be for an indefinite term, with the ability of a simple majority being able to terminate the contract. And you can, I guess, put in that contract, the thing about if you terminate without cause, that there's a severance pay, whatever you want to call it, of so many months, but it seems to me like, first of all, that damn thing should have been out on the table back when the first contract was issued. We shouldn't be finding that out today. Secondly.
The first contract to the first city manager.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, that's pertinent information. It's significant information. Means that we've had an initial contract, a renewal of a contract, and our renewal of the contract, that didn't comply with the charter. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of late in the game to find that out. Secondly, I, I do, in my comments, I don't know if you read them or not, what I did is, I went through, I found I didn't have enough space, so I just basically said, here's areas I think we need to improve upon. One of them, which the mayor did touch on, was that I said that, to me, we should have, and it's easy to quarterback the game, but really, information on project, construction projects, which you can call the FEMA, FEMA cleanup, was a construction project. We were twenty-five dot, twenty-five working days roughly, overspent on the original estimate. Now, I understand the estimate was an estimate because Lee County's estimate, they start out here and actually cost that, but I do think that we should have been notified that we were at four million, not five and a half, the original estimate. Then, some of the things that took place in the meeting, we would have discussed, and we may have still ended up at, I think it was twelve and a half, I think was the grand total, but we may have been able to do some things to cut some money, but I do think that that's an area that we need to improve upon, and I also thought that, well, that, that was one of the bigger things that I thought we needed to improve on, is better reporting on projects, and I also think that if we're gonna exceed a cost, a line item in the budget, we spend several different days working on a budget workshop, that we need to be informed before we change a line item, because city manager can legally change line item monies, move them around, and a cost in it, as long as it doesn't exceed, but it would be nice to know that we're gonna do that before we've done it. In other words, rather than after the fact, know it before the fact. If the, so that, that's my, my thoughts. I think if we were gonna extend it, I think we need to do it according to the charter. Because I was told, there's a couple other things we're not doing to the charter too, that also need to be clarified. One of them is that, the way in the charter it's supposed to be, that we give a COLA raise. raise to the employees, and we don't do that anymore, and it, you know, one minute I hear the charter is sacrosanct, next minute I don't, it seems like it's okay not to follow it. So let's follow it if we're, whatever we're gonna do, I would say that.
Right. And Peter, you have that, do you want to?
And I think, and I think what should happen is Councilman O'Flynn would then get with Carl to go through the contract, because we're talking about a different contract, including, everything that's in there would be up for grabs, I would think.
I, I don't really understand how this, how this, uh, non-definite date term that, um...
We have a, we've been doing contracts that say it's for a specific period of time.
Yeah, I know.
There is a little legalese, and that is, it should say in there, he's appointed, and that, I mean, that's a big, that's, that's...
I don't, I don't think this is the time to go through it, but the sentence says, uh, "The city council by majority vote of its total membership shall appoint a city manager for an indefinite term and fix the manager's compensation and approve the reimbursement of expenses." But I don't think we're gonna, uh, solve what no one has touched for 16 years in five minutes in April here.
Well, and I guess my question is, is from my little bit, I didn't think you could have an indefinite...
Well, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, I'd be, by state law, like, let's use the fire chief.
He's not, right.
But he's appointed by the board, and by state law, he can only have a three-minute, a three-year.
Can I ask you a favor?
We're not gonna solve that a fun, in, in April.
No.
I think we need to res, get some research done.
So what, what I'd like to propose, uh, we have approved, um, Deputy Mayor O'Flynn to speak with Carl and discuss, uh, well, what's interesting in this, right? We don't know what Carl wants. Maybe Carl's applying for other jobs, maybe he's not, we don't know. Maybe he's thinking he wants to be outsourced, we don't know. We, we don't know, so what this is, is we're having a, we're convincing ourselves up here, and that's great, uh, but I, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a motion to continue what we've, uh, we've nominated Deputy Mayor O'Flynn to go, talk with Carl, negotiate with Carl, and I'd like to make a motion that we continue that process, and, uh, perhaps you could have a report at our next meeting, or the meeting after that, whenever, whenever you and Carl can get together.
All right.
But I'd like to make a motion that we continue that process.
Are we negotiating a contract, or are we figuring out what the response is to these concerns and getting Carl's view on what he wants? I assume it's the second.
Well, I thank you, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
But I, but I think we're also, when we talk to him, the approach should be that we would like to have him continue as city manager, that's what I would like in the discussion. And I think that there is a mechanism by which we can address, a lot of the, a number of the council persons have put specific recommendations or concerns, and if we just, uh, went through all those individual performance evaluations and made a list of them, and that, and we'd say, this, this, these are problem areas, how are you gonna deal with it? Or these are suggestions where we want to see this done in the future, and he'll have a roadmap for how we, as a consent, as a council together and collegially are, are directing him, which I think is one of the issues that I, I think has caused some difficulty.
Okay, so I, there's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second.
With respect to what you said.
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, okay.
So just for clarity, what I'm gonna do is talk to Carl about the concerns that have been raised, and see where he's coming from on those issues, and generally, where he's generally coming from with respect to, uh, contract, but I'm not negotiating a contract at this time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, um, now we get to move on to the city attorney. Somebody want to kick that off? Peter, you had...
Well, my, my suggestion, I, I think we'd have to figure out how to extend the term, but if we're gonna look seriously at outsourcing in a way consistent with what I said about, uh, appropriately respecting the abilities of the city attorney, um, I'd prefer to do that rather than have a discussion about contract, because that's just two concepts that collide, so that would be my motion.
Only question I have is what, oh, and I, forgive me for not knowing, what's the city charter say about that, since it got a raise?
No, no.
Since it's been raised, what's it say about?
It's a very good point, right?
Because I think those are, in the charter, those are the only two.
Sure. Section 40, actually, they're not, there's others, but we're the ones that directly appoint, um, or respond to you. Uh, Section 41 of the charter says the city attorney, um, has a bunch of different functions, but you may remove the city attorney for any reason by majority vote of its, uh, total membership. There's no right to a hearing, there's no right to anything else.
There's no right to a contract or anything, just that you can be removed, there is, it's silent on your contract.
And I'm not talking about that.
No, I know. No, I'm just...
Right. I'm just telling you what the charter says, right. And, and the charter does not talk that you have to have in-house, you can have outside.
Gotcha.
The charter's very flexible.
Gotcha.
Okay, great. Uh, so Peter's made a motion, I'll second that motion. Is there further discussion?
And that was to extend the contract while we come up back?
No, no.
Nope. Peter want to restate the motion?
Yeah.
That we have a consensus on council, not that we're gonna do outsourcing, and not everyone's agreed to it, but there's a majority that's agreed to it, that we're gonna move forward with respect to exploring the concept of outsourcing, and as I said, consistent, I won't repeat that, with respect to Audrey. Um, and that's what I'd like to progress, and if we get to a point, which I think is likely, uh, that we'd have to extend for a few months, uh, the period of contract, I'd come back and talk to council about that, but not at this moment.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr, Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duet?
Aye. Okay, great, uh, there's nothing listed here, but what I'm gonna do, Amy, anything good, good of the community, good of the order, comments you want to make? Town hall meetings you've been in within District 1 or anything?
I don't think I've done, I haven't done anything.
I, just anything you want to report now for council member?
I did meet with Dawn, um, because I wanted to follow up on some of the statistics that she gave us last, last time on the beach, and also to review, uh, what seems like, uh, a perpetual recommendation that we improved Scrivener's areas, and I wanted to be more certain about how I understand it, and, um, you know, I encouraged her to be, to pick out one or two of these Scrivener's areas that she sees that, which is inconsistent with the, um, the future land use map, and bring it to council so that they, it was very precisely presented, and we could determine whether we wanted to go ahead with it. I know that we're doing that in part, in part with, um, our ear work and our clarification on our codes, but, um, you know, I, I don't want to keep hearing the same thing again and again and again. If we have these issues, I want them, it reserved, resolved, and I thought that we had agreed that we were gonna do that, but I don't see how we're progressing that at all. So those are the two things I discussed with her.
Yeah, and I just, in, in response to that, I do have a, uh, call tomorrow afternoon with Attorney Theriak. Uh, the Scrivener errors were kind of front and center, or at least for some of us, a year ago.
Right.
So here we are, a year later, and not much has happened, or maybe a lot's happened, but nobody knows.
Right.
So I do have a conference call with Attorney Theriak tomorrow afternoon, and Dawn will be on the line as well.
Well, I appreciate that, because I do think that we, we should progress that and just, you know, fix it. If there are 50 of them, if there are 10 of them, it can't take us five years to fix them, you know? I don't even know how many there are, but I think we should know what they are and try to fix them, so I appreciate your taking...
No, abs, abs...
...the forefront there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else, Amy?
No.
Greg?
Uh, just a point of personal privilege, uh, just let everybody know, especially in Amy's district, I've gotten a few phone calls about the fire station up at Station 3, uh, the one by Chamber of Commerce. It has been torn down, the, the, uh, actual fire truck's been relocated to another area behind Landsdown, so they're not without coverage, and building on that station should start, uh, in the next two weeks, so hopefully in 180 days, there'll be a new station there.
Where is that, Greg? I'm sorry?
Station 3 up by the Chamber of Commerce by Pelican Landing.
Yeah!
It's gone.
Gone.
Termites. No more.
Termites, crickets.
But there's gonna be a new one there, though, right? You're just rebuilding it.
Yes, rebuilding it, and I want to thank, uh, Tad for, uh, doing an article. He'd gotten some phone calls, and, uh, I did an interview with him, so Naples Daily News, thank you.
And, and the interest of being districtless now, but when I was in District 4, that was in District 4 back in the old days, unless that's changed, but anyway.
They'd like me better.
Yeah, yeah, you know. Laura?
Yep. I'm just grateful to be here, and I thank everyone who voted for me, and I hope I do a good job.
You will do a fantastic job. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
I'll just, uh, share a few things. I had mentioned, um, the conference call with Attorney Theriak tomorrow afternoon on the Scrivener errors. Uh, Saturday, of course, we have Celebrate Benita in the park. We do have to come up, council, with a time, because Laura, um...
You're, you can't...
Would 5 o'clock do it?
Whatever accommodates you, what we should do.
Yeah, I know, and I hate to be, would 5 o'clock be all right, Laura? I know that's early, and I might be in a tuxedo, but I...
That's fine, that's close.
Okay. 5 o'clock? Okay, council, we can all, we'll get introduced on the stage and throw out some, um, beach balls and whatever we do, or go down and talk to members in, in the crowd, Peter. You don't have to throw beach balls at them.
That's what I want, yeah.
Okay. But, uh, okay, so that's Saturday, uh, I hope everybody can join us there, and then the call was supposed to be on Monday, but I'm, um, just so you know, working through, uh, with South Florida Water Management District, um, having a call with Lee County. It was supposed to be Monday, it's not gonna be Monday now, it's just one of these scheduling things that is kind of taking on a life of its own, but we'll be speaking with Ernie Marks, uh, the director. Uh, at this point, I believe it to be Commissioner Keiker, it might be Commissioner Pendergrass, just depending on the chairman, uh, district, however they want to decide that, but one of the county commissioners, uh, to continue the conversation, to make progress, and then there will, so that will be a call, and then a few weeks later, later in the month of April, there will be a personal meeting with, um, Executive Director Marks. He's over here, I believe, once a month to attend a meeting in Naples, so we're gonna piggyback on that and sit down with him and continue, uh, those conversations, so that's what I have, and welcome, Laura, congratulations, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Welcome. Peter?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Mike?
Just wanted to welcome Laura, you did a very good job tonight.
So, Laura.
And then also, um, during public comment, it was brought up about, um, issues with handicap accessibility, and so I was wondering if it'd be possible to allow me to maybe help set up some kind of, uh, education, uh, program to help assist with that.
Sounds good.
Oh, great.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Very good, councilman. Excellent, great work, thanks, great suggestion, Mike. Fred?
In, in the effort of getting the meeting over with, I have nothing.
You have nothing, okay.
Congratulations to Laura, though.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, everybody, okay. Uh, the next item is the approval of the minutes for February 26th, uh, March 19th, and March 21st.
So moved.
So moved in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. Anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, motion to adjourn?
There's one, there's one.
Oh, I'm sorry, no ma'am, please. No, no, please join us, come on up, please. I'm sorry. You can speak, anything you'd like to speak on, ma'am. I apologize, I didn't see your hand, or...
That's okay. Um, I do have some things to say, uh, about, um, the city manager. Uh, in trying to deal with some of the incompetencies, dealing with the negligence of not looking into the ADA enforcement in this city, um, it was very disappointing to me numerous times. There are a lot of, um, a lot of situations where businesses should have pulled permits and didn't, and nobody noticed. Um, there, and those, I was told that the permits generate the inspections that would have caught these ADA violations. And so I said, okay, give me a list of things that you need a permit for in Benita Springs, and things you don't. Okay, let me say, put it this way, here's Lee County's list, here's St. Pete's list, can I have a list like that? No, there isn't such a thing.
Bethany, and I apologize, could you pull that mic up to your, just for others? Thank you, ma'am.
And then, and then, um, and so I said, okay, hypothetically, in this situation, oh, that would definitely need a permit, and nobody pulled it, and there weren't any, and this has gone on, I can name numerous times with that. Um, and, and this city should be enforcing these ADA laws throughout our businesses, and they're not. Um, um, there was one other thing that just came up, and I, I can't remember it now, but it's been very disappointing to me, and it's been very disappointing trying to deal with the, um, city and some of the people, too, because of this, and we're just not getting anywhere, and I really think it's because of the city manager is not, um, in, is, is not following Florida statute 553.513 and 553.80, which means that the city municipality, the municipality must enforce ADA rules. So, oh, and the, that was the other thing. Um, I did offer to arrange for a educational forum for, uh, on ADA, and I was gonna ask, I offered it before asking, but I was gonna ask an ADA consultant. Um, that offer was refused, so I went to the, the Chamber of Commerce, and they also weren't interested, so I went to SCORE, and I said, would you be wanting to have an educational offering for business owners framed like this? Here's how you avoid lawsuits, uh, would you like to do that? And SCORE said, absolutely, can you get somebody? And I got an ADA consultant who agreed to give them that for free, and did an awesome job at doing an ADA compliant for small businesses for the SCORE, and that happened about a month ago now, and I'm glad they did it. Thank you.